Welcome to our special meeting for the city of Daly City, Monday, December 13, 2021. For those of you joining us, thank you. We are starting our meeting for the reorganization for this upcoming year. So I want to thank everyone that's tuning in, whether you're watching on YouTube or on Zoom with us. At this moment, I'd like to say thank you for those elected officials that we partner greatly with, that have joined us this evening. I see we have Assembly Member Phil Ting. Thank you very much for being here. Senator Scott Wiener, thank you very much. And also Supervisor David Canepa. We know that you are all on busy schedules. I'd like to afford you the opportunity at this moment to speak, and I will hand it over to Assembly Member Phil Ting.
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. It's great to be here. Just want to welcome everyone. Thank all of the council members for an amazing year of really hard work at Daly City. We've had a very difficult time just getting through COVID. I know that you've done amazing work in really helping tilt up testing centers, vaccination centers, at the same time making sure that your duties of keeping your citizens safe and really healthy have been a tall, tall task. So I just really wanted to, again, commend all of you for all of your hard work. I know I've seen all of you out and about in the city at various functions as well as really working hard to make sure that the public health issues are really being addressed. So again, just want to congratulate you for all the hard work. Thank you for everything you're doing for the citizens of Daly City, and I look forward to seeing hopefully more of you soon in person. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much, Assembly Member Phil Ting, and for your support, representation up there at the state level and always reaching out and asking us the needs of our community here. And we're very grateful for that partnership, and thank you for all your support that you've done to help the infrastructure of the city of Daly City, from helping us with, you know, some dollars for our community centers and all the way to helping us with our future park, Margate Park Skate Park. I know a lot of youth are very excited about that. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Now, is your hand raised, Councilmember Benaventura?
No, I was, I thought it was an applause. Sorry about that.
No worries. We now have Senator Scott Wiener. You have the floor, and thank you so much for joining.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I thank you to the entire council for your incredible work in the community. And Madam Mayor, congratulations on your tenure. You know, this is, it's not an easy time to be a local elected official right now. I mean, it's not an easy time to be an elected official, period, but particularly at the local level throughout the country, we're seeing the tumult and some of the personal attacks, and it's just, it's just a real challenge. But our local communities and local, our local governments are really the building blocks of our democracy. As a former local elected official, I know firsthand that sort of sacred bond between local elected officials and the community. And the city council, I think, does a fantastic job of playing that role and being very connected with the community. And I saw it in spades throughout the pandemic in terms of council members just bringing into action to support the community during a very, very difficult and dangerous time for our community. So thank you so much for your work, and I look forward to continuing to work with you in the coming year.
Thank you so much, Senator Scott Wiener, for that, and thank you also for your support, continued support. We also know that you are always there to, for us when we're in need as well and to support our community. So thank you so much for being here and taking the time out this evening. And now we have Supervisor David Canepa. Welcome.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And let me just first say, I'm delighted to be here. And you know, I really want to recognize this council, I want to recognize the Vice Mayor, Dr. Rod, for his leadership, Councilmember Sylvester, Councilmember Benaventura. Just thank all of you for your leadership during this pandemic. And Councilmember D. Giovanni. So I just want to say a couple of words. First of all, I want to thank our workforce for all they do. I'm a resident of the city, but to see day in and day out, these people work under conditions, this pandemic, it's unbelievable. So I want to recognize the workforce. But I want to recognize someone who grew up in this community and represents everything that is right in this community. And that is Mayor Jocelyn Manalo. I want to tell you on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, because of your leadership efforts in a very, very tough year, we've declared it Mayor Jocelyn Manalo Day in the County of San Mateo.
Thank you, Supervisor.
And the reason, the reason we've done that, Jocelyn, is because, and I told you this, you probably had one of the toughest years as mayor, but you've shown your resiliency. You've shown that you can meet the challenge. And what you've done, Jocelyn, what you've done as mayor is something as a resident of this city, it makes me proud. And I think about the hospital, Seaton Hospital, which you partnered with us. I think about when the county, we talked about getting vaccinations into Daly City, and we had those tough conversations, your advocacy, your advocacy being on those sites. We couldn't have, couldn't have a better mayor, Jocelyn. So I don't know if you see this proclamation, but I'll give it to you. It's right here. Can't see it probably through Zoom. But this document stands to represent a testament to someone who grew up in this community, is a role model for all kids, role model for many. And Jocelyn, thank you very much. And I want to say this, what we do is not for this generation, it's for future generations. So, you know, I think about your kids and my kids. It's that leadership that is really going to bring forth future generations. And so, thank you very much, Madam Mayor, for everything you've done. And if we can give the mayor a round of applause, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you Supervisor David Canepa for such a lovely surprise and your support. You know, we can't do this work without the amazing partners we have, as I mentioned. And you have been right there with us in the community and never forgets Daly City, where you're from. And so we're grateful for also your leadership in partnering with us to ensure that the access to vaccine sites are right there in our community. And always keeping us apprised and how to ensure that it gets to the community on the ground. And so we are really grateful for your partnership as well in the county and your leadership and for never, ever forgetting us here, as we always see you around and always there for our community, always. So much appreciated, and thank you for the honor. Thank you. And it's always wonderful to have our electeds up and down, like I mentioned, from the state all the way to the county, to be with us on this reorganization day. So once again, many thanks, deep appreciation to all the work that you do and the partnerships we do to make sure that our residents get the support that we have. So now, at this time, on the agenda, we will be moving on to... Let me grab it one moment. There's so many windows. Oh, so at this time, we will now actually do the pledge of the flag. So let's all rise and do the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May we have roll call, please.
Mr. Benaventura.
Present.
Dr. Rod.
Present.
Ms. D. Giovanni.
Present.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, present.
Ms. Manalo.
Thank you very much, President. All right, now we're moving on to, this year, I'm very honored to present the Mayor's Awards. And so now we will now move on to the award ceremony. So this evening for Mayor's 2021 Artist of the Year, drumroll, we have Mr. Keith Okada, better known as Keith O., DJ Keith O. For many of you, you have seen him at many functions in the community, always lending his talent, you know, on so many functions. And so Keith Okada, better known as Keith O., was born and raised in Daly City, graduated from Westmore High School. He is a renowned DJ and uses his music to bring and build a community together. Inspired to give back to his community, Keith began to build community at Classic Bowl with his K.O. Sports Bar and Lounge, where he would host Keith O. Kids Days. You may also remember him from the Geller Park Grand reopening celebration earlier this year. So congratulations to our Artist of the Year, Keith Okada. And at this point, I'll have this opportunity for Keith O., DJ Keith O., to say some words.
Oh, let me unmute. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, hello. And thank you so much for this award. It's very surprising, and I'm really honored, especially, you know, the way the few, last few years have been. And I've been, really been trying to be on the low, you know, and not share a lot. But I do, I do appreciate, obviously, everything. And I know, like you said, it was a really hard couple, couple of years for everybody. And I'm definitely, this is just the beginning. We're gonna, we're gonna do so much, so much more. But I do appreciate everybody, the city council. Congratulations to everybody. You know, I get, I get all choked up when I do speeches, so that'll be it. Thank you. Love you, Daly City. Love you.
Thank you so much, DJ Keith O. I see Councilmember Benaventura's hand up, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say to Keith, and this was really a long time coming. Keith, as he was talking, I mean, he's sort of a mild-mannered guy who doesn't really want a whole lot of recognition, but he does the work and is therefore deserving of the recognition. He's always there in the community. He doesn't really like to take credit for stuff, but he just wants to be there and give all his all. And so I, I think this is a marvelous pick, a very well-deserving pick for someone who's contributed to this community for such a long time. So thank you, Madam Mayor, for recognizing Keith O. Keith, you do a great job. We love you, man. And we're just really grateful as a community for what you've done. So thank you.
Thank you. And now we are moving on to our Mayor's Small Business of the Year Award. For our Mayor Small Business of the Year Award, it goes to Keith's Chicken and Waffles. Congratulations. Keith's Chicken and Waffles, owned by Keith Richardson, and partnering also with his brother Devon, serves up as a standard chicken and waffle combo, as well as specialty waffles. And I also did notice that they do breakfast now, if you haven't seen their announcement, and other Southern-inspired dishes like mac and cheese, collard and greens, and cornbread. A true foodie at heart, these recipes were formed by Keith and his family members. And we have Devon representing Keith's Chicken and Waffles this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you hear, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Welcome.
Thank you. On behalf of my brother Keith, who's feeling under the weather this evening, he asked me to join the meeting to accept this award. And we'd just like to say thank you so much for the support and just all of the, it's all of the support that we've received since day one. We passed the five-year mark for a small business in Daly City this past August. And we're just so grateful and thankful to be in a community that is supportive of small businesses. You know, we have to eat every day. And so we, yeah. We truly, and really fun, actually, to work and serve in the Daly City community. So thank you very much on behalf of my brother.
Thank you so much, Devon. And please tell Keith we send his regards. We hope that he feels better soon. But really, it's wonderful to hear that you have reached your five-year mark. We know that in the small business community, that's a huge milestone. And really, you know, it just shows that, you know, you're here, all here for the long run, and we're here to support you. So thank you very much. I see two hands raised at this time from my colleagues. I will... We have Councilmember Benaventura, then we have Councilmember Sylvester, then we have Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Richardson, I, once again, I can't, this is an outstanding pick for the Small Business of the Year. You guys have, I think, the best chicken waffles in the Bay Area. I mean, I probably would even say it's better than Roscoe's or Brown Sugar. So you name it. I've been to all of them. And, but I am actually interested in, in this new menu of breakfast. So I rave about, obviously, the chicken waffles, but also your sides, in particular, your candied yams. But, so what's the breakfast menu that you've added?
Yes, so what we've added, we started, we decided to start off small. So it'll be a typical breakfast that you would, you would have your bacon, egg, sausage, and of course, chicken and waffles. But one of the, you know, sort of the, one of the dishes we'll have is like shrimp and grits as one of the options for breakfast. And we'll start to serve coffee. Most likely, it'll be Pete's Coffee. And, yeah, so we'll be sending out announcements shortly on that. And, yeah, we're just thrilled to be able to open up our services and hours to start to serve breakfast. And so we'll have an announcement out on the hours and the days shortly.
Can't wait to try them shrimp and grits. Thank you.
And thank you for your support since day one.
Thank you, Councilmember Benaventura, Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. Devon, again, I couldn't think of another business well-deserving as Keith's Chicken and Waffles. I don't know much about business, but from what I've read about businesses, the way you succeed is to make something, one thing, and be good at it. And that's what you folks have definitely done. I am so proud, and I'm honored that you're receiving the certificate. And I know business is going to go well and continue to expand for the future. And if you would share with us, is it true that you have another location coming soon? I believe it's Half Moon Bay. Oh, okay, see? Oh, okay. Well, I do read the papers. So I want to say congratulations, and it definitely shows. You don't have to tell us much about it, but I'm glad to hear that you folks are expanding and coming along very well. Again, congratulations.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester, and thank you again for your support since day one. Yes, it is true. We're working very hard to expand into Half Moon Bay community. And, yeah, just wish it all the luck, and please. Thank you, guys. We love you, Daly City.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. Now we have Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, my hand didn't go up when Keith was on there. I want to say to Keith first, remember, you are the Daly City Mayor. And respectful to all the mayors that we had, that's always the inside joke, and everybody knows about it. So it's not disrespectful to everyone, to my colleagues, but that is true, right? And so thank you for all you do. And Richardson family, what can we say? It actually is your family. It's your food, yes, but along with that food comes that great family, that great love, the great bonding, the great spiritual. I know you guys are very spiritual and goes way back within lineage in your family, and you have kept that. You have a great foundation, and God is blessing you all the way, and I see it shining. So blessings and love to the recipients and all. And that's what happens when you do good things. So keep that foundation to both of you and to all the recipients. Thank you. Blessings.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember D. Giovanni, and thank you so much for being here, Devon. And please, like I mentioned, send our warm regards to Keith, and we're hoping he's feeling better soon. And for those of you out there, they're right there, support Keith's Chicken and Waffles. They got breakfast now. And so we'll see you. Thank you so much.
You are. Good evening.
Good evening. And now we are moving on to the Mayor's Medium Business of the Year 2021. It's the Bread Basket Bakery, owned by Liza Cavan and her family. This has been a staple in Daly City since 1977. Serving hot mini pondesal and other Filipino favorites, this corner bakery continues to be a cornerstone in our community, sharing Filipino roots, community, and hospitality. And today we have Liza here, Lisa here to represent. I will say, as I was going to Jefferson High School, walking home from school, that definitely was a stopover for me.
Thank you so much for this honor. Just want to just shout it out to our workers who keep coming in every day, early in the morning, and making that bread, and all our customers who come in and give us that support. Our community, people, all of you from the city council, we're really appreciative of this recognition. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Benaventura, then Councilmember Sylvester, and Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Yes, I wanted to also mention how the Bread Basket has really been involved in the community, particularly when we had the community feeds. They were very, very generous in giving and donating pondesal. And I think also they made beko. I'm not sure, but it was just a tremendous amount of support, unselfish, very caring and giving. And so I wanted to just thank, get this opportunity to thank them again for being there for the community when the community needed it. And they have some really good pondesal. I have it a lot in my, in the morning with my coffee. So I urge everybody to go to their business, their local business, and they are really good people. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Benaventura. And that is correct. They have been there for the community, especially during last year, the pandemic. They were really trying to see how they can help within our communities, and that continues to shine through. So Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, Councilmember Benaventura beat me to the point. Besides the needs and the craving for the baked goods from the Bread Basket, I'm definitely a customer, but I generally let my wife go inside. I got a saying, "I drive, you fly." So they probably don't see me much, but they see my wife. When I saw the donation at a few community events here in Daly City from the Bread Basket, and when I saw all those racks of bread, I said to myself, did they really make all of these? I mean, it's such I mean, it's such a small place, I, I've never been in the back, but they do so much with so little that they have. And I'm very, very proud of you, Ms. Kavan, to be honored this evening and to be recognized. Such as, if you've ever been there, they're located right at the corner. And again, it looks so small from the outside, but they do so much on the inside, and it definitely shows. So, well done, congratulations, and keep up the great work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. Now, Councilmember DG, and then Vice Mayor Das Magual.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to tell you, it's probably something you don't know. Your reputation, which I can say, which is a word that people use of a negative, but it's a positive. When you go to OLPH, Holy Angels, St. Andrews, all throughout our city and beyond, you hear the lolos and the lolas and the titas and everyone talk about, hey, did you get, did you stop by there? Did you get, did you get the bread? Do you know, let's go by there. So, they know that it's fresh, it's a family business, which is stellar. And that family business is something to be cherished. And because you're such a wonderful family, just like the theme of Keith O. and the rest of them, that's what's, again, the foundation that gives, I think, the success as well. It's the product, but it's always the people behind it, like, and like you said as well, your workers. So, so blessings for that as well. So, looking forward to more. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember DG. And last but not least, Vice Mayor Das Magual.
You so much, Mayor. Congratulations to you all. Is it Kavan or Kavin?
Kavan.
Okay, okay. Just want to make sure I said it correctly. I just wanted, like, you know, I didn't get a chance to say this about Keith Chicken and Waffles, but your food as well, when, I want to quote one of my good friends, Alan Ocampo, that did research about food, and he mentioned that food is more than just a bite, that it's about experiences, it's about community, and the recipes that, that make that food is out of love. And when people think of Daly City, they think of the Bread Basket. So, thank you again for the donations for the community drive. I remember working with my colleagues on council, packing up food during the beginning of sheltering in place. And I was like, whoa, just like Councilmember Glenn Sylvester was saying, like, where are we getting this overstock of bread just going into every single car? So, thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Das Magual. And thank you again, Lisa Kavan, for your support and really being there for the community. And it's amazing how long, you're basically like an institution in Daly City. It's since 1977 till now, you know, a really a staple. We see you also in the supermarkets, right? You can grab it from everywhere, and it's just a testament of the quality of food that you provide and also just how beautiful your family is that is willing to give back. And I remember that, you know, it would be you and your husband, you know, dropping off, you know, the bread and, and really just doing the legwork also on your, on your own end. So, once again, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you all for the nice words.
And now, we are moving on to our Mayor's Large Business of the Year Award for 2021. Always happens. I'm not moving as much. So, the Mayor's Large Business of the Year Award 2021 goes to the Northeast Medical Services, NEMS. It's a nonprofit community health center serving the medically underserved populations of the San Francisco Bay Area. NEMS is one of the largest community health centers in the United States, serving over 65,000 patients at 13 locations in the San Francisco Bay Area, including one located right here in Daly City. NEMS provides comprehensive, linguistically competent, and culturally sensitive healthcare services to a variety of patients, a majority of whom are uninsured or low-income. Today, we have Johnson Wong, who's the Chief Financial Officer for Northeast Medical Services NEMS, and has been with NEMS for over 13 years. Johnson has over two decades of experience in financial operation management, and now oversees NEMS Accounting, Billing, Purchasing, and Facilities Department. Welcome, Mr. Wong.
Hi, hi, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much. I wanted to just let you know how honored and humbled we are at NEMS to be able to get the award from the city of Daly City. Working with the city, we, we have, we're actually going to be expanding our site at Eastmore to be, to be able to accommodate more exam rooms and to be able to really help the community even more. We're starting a little bit with a joint venture with Seton. So, we're really embedded into the community. I really want to just say thank you very much for the recognition, but we really are embedded in the city and we welcome it. Thank you very much, again, from all of us at NEMS here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wong, and really appreciate all the work that you all have done to reach out to the vulnerable communities. We see that you've done it over the course of the years, but most especially, we've seen it during also the pandemic. When, you know, hard-to-reach populations, especially around ensuring that there is that culturally, linguistically appropriate support, is crucial. It's crucial to ensure that there is that accessibility, you know, and outreach to the community. So, thank you so much for all you do. And I see my colleagues, and so, let me pull this up right now. We have Councilmember Sylvester, then Councilmember DG, then Councilmember Bonaventura, and then Vice Mayor Das Magual.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Wong, the man behind NEMS. As I look closer, and I'm kind of getting a little bit closer to the computer, you look very tired. And, well, yeah, yeah, you do, and, and it's probably because not do you just go in to the, perhaps, the various offices here in Daly City, but NEMS has definitely surfaced on the radar. Again, not just going into the office, but you drive around, or somebody drives around and say, oh, possible location here, possible location here, and you alluded to it based upon your statement. Believe me, you are on the radar, we know what NEMS do, and continue the great work you do. And the more service centers you can open for our community, the better it'll be. So, just wanted to let you know, you are on the radar. In the time I've been on council, NEMS has surfaced many times. And you keep forging forward, you keep forging forward. You don't know what you will get unless you ask. So, keep up the great work, congratulations, Mr. Wong.
Thank you very much, Councilmembers Sylvester.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. And now, we have Councilmember DG.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I remember when there was like, when it first started the COVID, Mr. Wong, and I don't know if you remember that, just calling over there, and it was like, everybody's in a panic, can't find the vaccinations, and there were certain people in our community that really, really were in need, and some being first responders. And you guys stepped up to the plate and tried to figure it out because of insurances or what have you. I mean, you didn't just drop it, you followed through on it. And then you developed the drive-through, and then you just continued on from there, and you have done it like non-stop in this community. So excited that you're having an expansion. And, and the healthcare there that you have is such quality, compassionate care, which is very well-received in the community and throughout. Because in the times of a pandemic, it's stressful on your healthcare workers, it's stressful on everybody, but the continuity of that is really felt in this community. And I don't want to let you know that, that you probably don't get to hear it, but when I hear it with some of the community members, that's nice to hear. The compassion still continues even as hard as everybody works. So, thank you very much, and blessings on the expansion and the partnership. And it's only going to benefit the wealth and health of our community. So, thank you, Mr. Wong, and you have to stay here. Thank you, and thank you to everyone at NEMS. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember DG. And now, we have Councilmember Bonaventura.
So, I have to thank NEMS for giving me my Moderna vaccination shot. They were really very accommodating, and they were very professional. And they had a really orderly way of doing it, and it was really a nice comforting feeling to be at a place where you know they were taking care of you. And so, I had some questions, and they were just very giving of information. I remember going to the opening of NEMS several years ago, and I just marveled at the location and all the things they provided. And it was very hopeful at the time, and they clearly exceeded the, the goals and expectations of the community. So, I want to thank you, Mr. Wong, for your leadership and for all of that you've done to provide for the community. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for such kind words.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Bonaventura. And once again, last but not least, Vice Mayor Das Magual, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Mr. Wong, and to the whole staff at NEMS. I think one thing that really strikes me in terms of like how important, like culturally relevant and responsive care is, because not everybody is one single template. And I think that's what NEMS provides, that culturally relevant and responsive healthcare that people need. The elderly, the young folks, to people being administered vaccinations. So, again, thank you again for your service in Daly City.
Thank you. Thank you for kind words, Council.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. And thank you once again, please let your whole team know. We are grateful for the service that they do for our community, and it is really amazing to hear that there's expansion and also a continued support in our communities. So, as many of your workers were on the front lines and continue to be on the front lines, please tell them our sincere thank you.
I will. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
And, and now, we will be moving on to our Mayor's Citizen of the Year Award for 2021, which will, our Mayor's 2021 Citizen of the Year Award goes to Mr. Cecil Owens. Mr. Cecil Owens, former Board of Trustee of the Bay Shore School District, has served over the 42 years. I think I mentioned in his retirement party, that is older than I, and that is huge testament of his dedication. His dedication and contributions to the Bay Shore community, specifically his service to the children, has been outstanding. And, and so, it was quite fitting this year to honor all the work that you've done over the years, Mr. Cecil Owens.
Well, thank you very much. I'm really pleased.
Thank you for all you do. I see Councilmember Bonaventura and Councilmember DG, then Councilmember Sylvester. And then Vice Mayor Das Magual. I see a pattern here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, my first introduction really to public service work was brought about by a call from Cecil Owens. When I got first appointed on the council, the very first constituent call I got was from Cecil. And he called to complain about a liquor store that was hanging their banners advertising liquor on Daly City property on a fence. And so, basically, Cecil told me, what, what am I going to do about it? And so, I went to that liquor store in the Bay Shore, and I told him to take it down because of what Cecil Owens had mentioned. So, ever since then, Mr. Owens has not been shy about pointing out things and asking for help and making sure the Bay Shore community was taken care of. He is the one that basically introduced me to the Bay Shore community. He's the one that invited me to events, including at the school, at the graduations, at the winter concerts. And so, I appreciate that, Cecil, and how you helped me integrate into the Bay Shore, because you cared deeply about the community and you made sure that we on the council recognized and didn't forget them. And you have, what I think, has brought a consciousness of the Bay Shore in all our minds. When we talk about the development at the Bay Shore and what you need, we are always thinking about the Bay Shore because of you, because you planted that in our heads, that we need to always think about things like the Bay Shore needs some redevelopment, the Bay Shore needs a grocery store, the Bay Shore needs some attention. So, I think, Mayor Manalo, this is an excellent pick. Again, this is a long time coming. Cecil Owens has been a great community servant, and congratulations, Cecil, for receiving this.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Bonaventura, for your words. And next, we have Councilmember DG.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, Cecil, I'm glad that it worked. So, he was messaging me, trying to figure out how to get on, and that's why, so many reasons why I love you. And Dorothy, you're the heartbeat of Bay Shore, and we all know it. And you're the constant one that's always there, whether it's the messages we get, that I receive in my messenger. I know you're always on the other end, or whether I turn around and I call Dorothy so I can get you a message to see what you need, no matter what it is, whether there's branches hanging over, whether it's someone pouring something down the drains, or walking by the school and you see something you don't like, or whatever. Actually, I welcome it, because I know that if everybody's more aware, like you are when you take your walks, and you make sure that you're taking a walk and exercising, but you're also looking out for the community. And I think that we instill that in the other generations, which I think is a new school it is, and keeping your eyes on them and all your service on the Bay Shore. And it went beyond that, and with, along with your wife, it comes in pairs. And so, I'd like to recognize you both as a, as a pair. And I love you guys, and I'm blessed to have you as my friends. So, Bay Shore's heartbeat, Cecil Owens and Dorothy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you. Love you.
Thank you, Councilmember DG. And now, we have Councilmember Bonaventura.
Oh, no, I already did.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the list.
Thanks again, Ray.
And now, Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know where to begin. I haven't been on council that long, but definitely, Cecil, you have definitely rose up to the top of the cream for me. When we were discussing the development of the new Bay Shore School and to which you were a part of it, I knew that if it wasn't for you and your advocacy for the community, who is very, very resilient down there in the Bay Shore community, If it wasn't for you, it would have been a little bit more difficult for the Bay Shore School. And I'm so proud and happy to say that my grandson attends Bay Shore School. I coined the term when we approved the Bay Shore School. If I can do it all over again and live all over again, I would like to go to Bay Shore School. I remember that you reached out to me on the growing vines, not only on the walls, but extending out to the sidewalk, which made it dangerous on Martin Street, to which we had to reach out to the homeowners and say, "Take care of this." If it wasn't for you, somebody could have fallen. And it took you reaching out to me for me to actually go drive down there and verify for myself. Cecil, you play a very, very important part. And then also, I did get your message about the tree over there on Partridge. And you know, things happen and they happen for a reason. But it's glad, we are all happy that you are a part of the Bay Shore. I remember walking down the blocks there in the Bay Shore. I had some pamphlets and you said to me, "Hey, what do you got there?" So, the mere fact, see something, say something. You definitely do Cecil and you are definitely an asset for the Bay Shore community. So, I'll coin the term, "The Mayor of the Bay Shore." Congratulations, Mr. Owens, and thank you for your service and all that you have provided and continue to provide for the community.
Thank you, Glenn. Means a lot.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Sylvester. And last but not least, Vice Mayor Das Magwal.
I just want to say thank you for all your service, Mr. Owens. I always heard a lot about you. I've always seen you from afar. And from what people have told me, I have a lot of friends that work in the Bay Shore. And you know, you're the man. There's, I don't know how else I could say that, but like in a good way. Like when they say the man, in terms of like you planting the seeds, you are the advocate. You are the passion, the, I would say, like the drum major of the Bay Shore. They go towards your beat. And I just want to say thank you for all the service and a huge congratulations to you.
Thank you for your support, Rod.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Das Magwal. And thank you so much for all your service. I know it continues every single day with how much care and compassion you have about the Bay Shore. And like many others, you'll have the phone call or it's a messenger. I think that's the mode. When there's a concern from Mr. Owens, he's right there looking out for the community on so many levels. And that's the type of exactly the character and really just a champion. You've been a champion for the Bay Shore community for so many decades. And so, thank you so much and also to your lovely wife Dorothy. You both have given so much to the community and we are very grateful.
Thank you, Justin. Appreciate everything you do for City Ostol.
Thank you. And we know we got your daughter on, so I know she's watching. I was able to text her. She got the Zoom link and so, we got that also accomplished, so.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we are moving on to our Mayor's Commissioner of the Year 2021. And with that, I hope she's on the line. We have Ms. Perla Abriantos.
Yay, yes.
Oh, beautiful. Let me say something, we were just wanted to make sure it was tilted down. So, Ms. Perla Abriantos has lived in Daly City for over forty years and has served on many boards and programs. One of the proud founders of the Filipino Bañihan Resource Center. She has always valued civic volunteerism. Perla has been on the personnel board since two thousand and seven. And she remains a dedicated community leader in our city. So, thank you so much. That's amazing for all these times and years that you have served in our community. As its cointita, Perla, we are so grateful for your service that keeps on going. I will say, that energy that you have is infectious and that you continuously have abundant of energy to give back to our community. And it's evident and thank you for serving for so many years. And we are so grateful for that book.
Thank you. Notable Madam Mayor, Justin Manalo, members of the Daly City City Council, City Manager, Tiana Maltby, good evening. Oh, this is a surprise, not really a surprise, when Lailani called me and left a message in my phone. Not like when I was selected as Citizen of the Year. I knew it when I was sitting down there. But this is wonderful. It is very much appreciated and I am so honored being selected among my peers, which all of them are qualified to. I'm so honored, really. Tonight, I would like to extend my thanks to the workforce, especially in the office, the administrative office. In spite of the COVID-19, our office is still open. Also, to our city officials, keep up the good work and keep moving. Our city, I'm so proud to be in it. I live here for forty-five years. And whatever you guys are doing, I'm watching. You know, be sure that it is moving for the good of our community and I will support you. My dream or my goal this time, while I'm still walking and I can still do things, I will keep supporting you and I'm still going to support our community, especially our seniors. Let me say a little bit about PBRC. That twenty nineteen, we give out our community fed, that is Mother's Day and Father's Day. And this year, me first, we did again. And the last time we did was before Thanksgiving. That is why we are there and I am here to support the city and to support all of you. I love you guys. Keep on going and Merry Christmas.
Thank you so much, Tita Perla Abriantos, for those words. And I see hands up from my colleagues. We have Councilmember Budaventura, then Councilmember Sylvester, then we have Vice Mayor Das Magwal and Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tita Perla.
Hello.
So, this is another really great pick, another long time coming, a very well deserved award for Tita that everybody, everybody in Daly City knows who she is. She is, Tita Perla is someone that just, I'm not going to say how old you are, but you just.
Oh, see, it is going to be at the seven.
Okay, well, you said it, not me.
I'm proud of that.
You are. That's the thing. It's like you just keep going and it doesn't matter how old you are. You're just like the energy buddy. And for everything from, you know, when we have the flag raising, you're always the one coordinating, to the typhoon relief drives, you're always the one coordinating, to the Quezon City, Daly City, Friendship City, you're always there. And just, I mean, with the community drives, everything, it's, it's, there's nothing that you won't do. And whenever you do it, you do it so well. And I just, we owe you such a tremendous amount of gratitude for all these years of service as a community servant, as a personnel board and as a founding member of PBRC. Tita, personally, I mean, I wouldn't be where I am without you and your guidance and your mentorship. And you just, man, you just, you really care about people. And I remember this one story when we were at PBRC, this homeless lady came in and she had nothing. And you started to ruffle through the petty cash that PBRC had and just gave it to her. And you didn't ask any questions, you just saw that she was kind of a mess and you wanted her to have some food. And you, even I remember you started to call shelters to find out where we could place her. So, there is no one you won't help and you've helped a lot of people. And so, Tita, thank you for that. We love you and you're very well deserving of this award. Thank you.
Thank you too.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Budaventura. And definitely, Tita has always been at the forefront and always willing to be there and just lead the way and her heart is on her sleeve, definitely. Now, we have Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. Tita Perla, good evening. It is great to see your face this evening. I haven't seen you in quite some time.
Yes, me too.
I do recall, first of all, during the pandemic, we cared about you so much. You know, because given your age, we didn't want anything to happen to you. And that's the love and care that you have from friends, family and the rest of council. Wow, two thousand and seven, I wasn't even on the council then. But yet, your service to the city, the county of San Mateo precedes you. And I am so happy to be a friend of yours. Just like Councilmember Budaventura coined the term, the energy you have, you're the ever-ready battery, bunny, bunny. Just like, just keep going and going. I mean, at the events at PBRC, especially when there's food, and I would come into PBRC and I go straight to the food and sit down in the back. Because you walk better than me. And I, you know, I don't know, it's hard to explain. You are very humble. Sometimes, what I'll never forget is that we sit down and we have conversations. And you are a great listener. You do not take sides, but you listen very well. That's the sign of someone who is very humble and a great leader from inside, and that's what I see. So, another thing I do recall is a raffle at San Bruno. You would always take care of the raffle. And your voice, your enthusiasm made me want to buy an excessive amount of tickets. Because number one, it's you. Number two, it's for the great cause of PBRC. And I want to say those things I will never, ever forget. So, thank you, Tita Perla. I love you and keep up the great work.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Sylvester. We have Vice Mayor Das Magwal.
Thank you so much, Tita Perla. Everything that you have done for me. There's a term out there where they say about a living legend. And that's what you are, Tita Perla. You're a living legend. And every time I think of you, I think of all the strong penises that hold up like half the sky. And you do everything, you are a living legend. You are, I have to interview you to really talk about the history of Daly City. Everything from Daly City history to Filipino-American history. There has to be a time where we'll sit down, probably we'll eat and I'll record you because all the people that I teach in my classes, I tell them about you. And they'll ask, "Manu Rod, where can I find more information?" I was like, "Okay, we gotta, we have to write this book." And I stand on your shoulders. And I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for you, people like Alice Bolos, Bullet X, all the strong penises that have lifted me into this position where I'm at today. So, I want to say thank you, Tita Perla, and I love you as well.
Love you too.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Das Magwal. Oh, hello. Hello, Tito Meg, we see you. Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I want to echo something that Councilmember Sylvester said is a word. And I won't say where I saw Tita Perla, I won't give it away. But this woman is the epitome of that word, humble. Unbelievably humble, even in whatever it would be for herself. And there was a recent instance and she was so humble. She was allowing people to go in front of herself and allowing them and allowing them. And then until I spotted her and I said, "Uh-uh." I said, "Oh, no, Tita Perla, you can't, you know, you're standing there and she's allowing everybody, being so humble." But she needed to be taken care of as well. So, that humility shines. You shine like a light in the community. You shine like the Presbyterian Church when you had all those events. And with that love and support, everything that you gave to the community then, when Arlinda was alive and before, and with Kevin Mullen, the partnership that you bonded, bringing bridges together. That's something that you do and you do it with the love of your heart and you do it with the love of God. Your spiritualness expounds borders. It expounds many people. And people don't really realize that as humble as you are, you have received so many state-level awards, so many Woman of the Years, and you are so humble about everything in your life. And that's something that people need, that we should emulate because of that humbleness. When Alice Bolos, the stories, people that come in your life and you never judge anyone. And that non-judgment and that love exonerates. So, you are the jewel, you are a big jewel in the community. And you have really touched many hearts, many minds and much love throughout. And it's blessings and love that abound you. So, that is, that is well-known. So, be in touch in the heart that carries it with you every day. So, thank you very much and God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It is very much appreciated. To all our workforce, thank you, thank you. And have a wonderful New Year. Remember, I'm watching you. Good night. I will be.
We love you, Tita Perla.
I love you. Love you all.
Very small token to say thank you, but we are graced with your presence this evening and thank you, thank you once again.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And now, we are moving on to our next award for the Employee of the Year. I will say that it says Employee of the Year, but it was a bit difficult for me to choose just one person. And so, it's actually Employees of the Year. uh, one person, and so it's actually Employees of the Year. The person that I'm bringing up to the Zoom today is Ms. Angie Padilla. She was born in San Francisco, and she quietly, uh, currently lives in the quiet town of Colma, right next door. But she grew up in Daly City, um, on Lazane Avenue. She attended John F. Kennedy Elementary School, Colma Intermediate, Jefferson High School, she graduated in, in 1977, and from Skyline College. She started working for the city of Daly City in April of 1984 for the city manager, mayor, council's office as a clerk, then moved up to administrative assistant, and then promoted to administrative secretary admin to the council. And she has worked for four city managers, David Rowe, John Martin, Patricia Martel, and Shauna Malte. She's also worked with many council members, commissioners, city staff, and community over thirty-five years. Angie can, Angie continues to be an asset in this office. Um, you know, I will say this, sometimes, um, those that you don't see are, are some that work the hardest, right? And Angie is in the background doing all the work, and she's been doing it for several decades. And, um, really wanted to be able to honor her for her decades of service to our community, and, and so, congratulations, Angie.
Very much. Uh, this is a great honor. I've been here for a long time, and I'm glad you, you're acknowledging me tonight. I want to thank the council, and you, department heads, my fellow city employees in the community, they make my job easy, and again, thank you all.
Thank you, Angie. Thank you so much, uh, for, uh, working in, day in and day out for, for our, our community, our office, you know, you're always there, attentive, and, um, when I had learned over four um, decades or, or close to four decades, and also with four city managers, I don't know who could say that. And so, um, I will now, um, hand the floor over to, uh, Councilmember Bonaventura, then Councilmember D. Giovanni, and Vice Mayor Das Magual, and, uh, Councilmember Sylvester.
So, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, again, I could, this is another great pick. When I, when I, when I heard you, uh, say Angie's name, the first thing that came to mind, to me, was the word unsung hero. And then, as you were, um, uh, telling us, you know, about Angie, and I started thinking about all the things that she's done, that, that description really, uh, resonated with me about Angie, and then I just wanted to make sure I was hearing it right, and so I looked up the word unsung hero. And the definition of unsung hero is someone that provides a great benefit, has done very good work, but has not received the credit or recognition they deserve. And that, to me, is Angie Padilla. Um, you know, she's, probably a lot of the public don't know, but Angie is the one that really keeps us on top of things. She's the one that, um, keeps, makes sure that we know where we're supposed to be, that we know what, where the agendas are, or what meetings we're supposed to be at, and, um, she's not afraid to, you know, to keep reaching out by, by email, by text, or even by calling. And so, we were, we wouldn't be, uh, where we are without Angie's help and all that she's done. She's done a lot of the big things, but also a lot of the, the little things to keep us in the loop and to make sure we're doing our job as council members. And she's just always a very nice, kind person, um, that when you walk into the office, she's just, you know, very, um, happy to see you, excited to see you, she's always taking the time to find out how you are, and so, Angie, I just, this is probably the first time I've ever said to you, really, how much I appreciate um, you, um, as, as someone who, who takes care of us, and it's about time we took care of you today. So, thank you, Angie, thank you, Mayor, for the great pick.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you, Councilmember Bonaventura. Um, ditto, ditto, ditto. Angie is always there for us, and, um, definitely, um, an unsung hero. Um, we have Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, Ms. Angie, if anybody knows protocol when it comes to the council, uh, and that, that would be Ms. Angie. She knows our protocol, like what things are supposed to be done, how we're supposed to be communicated to, as the council should always know, like what dates we're supposed to have, it should come to council first to pick the dates, uh, before it goes out to anyone else. She is so professional, kind, caring, uh, multitasking, but not just multitasking, but everything she does is professional, and is done with so much knowledge that you just don't get that knowledge overnight. You just don't, and that needs to be respected. And I think that that, her having respect is very important, and recognition, and acknowledgement, and grateful, because you are humble, and then you, you stick. When, when I know that, that, that time when the, this city hall opens, I know you are here. I can call and you answer. When it's, when the people are calling nine to five, you are here. You don't leave at four-thirty, you don't leave at that, you answer every call and make sure people get called back. And you always go above and beyond. So, you are dealing with multiple personalities, uh, on our council members, you're like, like, uh, Councilmember Bonaventura said, you are constantly making sure that if we don't see it the first time, and we're on time, or what have you, you make sure we have reminders, um, but you do so gently, professionally, and it is much gratefulness, humbleness, and love that we, you are, you should be honored for this. Because, uh, sometimes things are pretty tough, but you need to be respected for everything you do, and always remain, and know that you are appreciated. So, we got you, Angie. So, uh, congratulations, and, uh, we got you. Congratulations, gratitude.
Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember D. Giovanni, and Vice Mayor Das Magual.
What can I say, Angie? I just want to say, thank you. I think when you, when people talk about why people want to go to work, the number one thing is relationships. And I just want, I just want to say I appreciate all the times when I come into City Hall, and we can talk about almost everything. You know, we talk about your grandkids, we talk about my kids, we talk about our issues about our own health, and that's something that I really appreciate you and how you humanize everyone. And I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you for, um, making my transition into council years ago, a seamless one, where I feel I was part of the family, so thank you, Angie.
Thank you, Rod.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Das Magual, uh, and, uh, last but not least, Councilmember Sylvester.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Angie, uh, three things that I wanted to bring up. Your personality and you, it's hard to judge someone from the outside. But you, it's not really difficult to judge, because what you do comes from inside, and I've seen this. One situation that I will never, ever forget, and this is during the pandemic, and I haven't been in the office for quite some time. When I walked in, you says, "Oh, I miss you, can I hug you?" Angie, it can't, I, I cannot explain how I felt to hear that from you. The second thing is, as Dr. Rod had made mention, we can engage in conversation, and your thoughtfulness, and your wanting, and your caring, there's not enough hours in a day to carry on a conversation with you, because it can go on practically forever. And you jump from one thing to another, sometimes I have, have difficulty keeping up, and I have to go back and say, "And the answer to your other question was this." What I learned while I was in the police department, no matter how high up the chain you go, whether you're the chief, lieutenant, commander, and you're moved over to another office, there is an executive secretary there or a secretary. You do not do anything unless you run it by the secretary, because they know more than you. So, Angie, you know more than they do. And, uh, your opinion really means a lot, it needs to be respected, and continue doing the great job that you do. I see it, we see it, and I'm sure the mayor has, uh, seen it, because that is why you are getting the award this evening. Well done, Angie Padilla. I love you also as well, keep it up.
Love you too. Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you, Angie, thank you so much, really day in and day out, um, really as an unsung hero, but also just being so compassionate, being, you know, there, a, a, as mentioned, I mean, you have provided decades of service, uh, to the city of Daly City. Um, and that is just phenomenal, it is. Um, your, uh, dedication, day in and day out. Um, as mentioned, you know, you make sure that we're at whatever meetings we need to be at. Um, and also just your intellect, you know, that, that is something that I, I've learned over the course of um, being able to work alongside you, um, and that is something very special. Um, so, thank you so much, and, uh, well-deserved. Uh, congratulations, Angie.
Thank you.
So, like I said, that, um, we have two this year for Employee of the Year, and this evening, we have also, uh, Mr. Tom Picoletti. Mr. Uh, Tom Picoletti, he currently serves as a Director of Department of Water and Wastewater Resources, and has been employed with the city since 2000. Tom also serves on the North Coast County Water District, North San Mateo County Sanitation District. He's been instrumental in many projects, particularly the Vista Grande Drainage Basin Improvement Project, that's a handful, because it is a very large project, that requires multi-jurisdictional partnership. And so, I, um, just, you know, really want to thank, uh, you, Mr. Picoletti, for just always, uh, looking for the best interests of Daly City, um, most especially in the large infrastructure projects, um, that are down the pipeline, and also, um, just in the, in the areas of water and, and sewage, you are an expert in that, but you always look out for the best interests of Daly City. So.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Um, pretty humbling, um, but I'll, I'll accept this on behalf of the employees that I work with here in DWRW. Appreciate the support of the council, city manager and staff. Um, it's a privilege to work here for Daly City, in a great community, with great people, my fellow department heads and, and the other departments that work with us. Um, just thank you very much for the recognition. I, I thought the Halloween costume contest was the pinnacle, but this is, this is a little bit better. Thank you very much, I appreciate it, and thank you for the recognition. Try to do the best every day, thank you.
Director Picoletti, um, it, it, it shows how much passion you have for the work you do, um, day in and day out as well. Um, you never skip a beat, and you always, um, um, are really there to advocate for, uh, the needs of, uh, Daly City residents. And, um, always looking out, I mean, and having that large infrastructure, uh, project down the line is, is no small feat. And I, and it's, it's, it's pretty amazing to, um, see all the hard work that you've done on this.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, I, I see my colleagues' hands, we have Councilmember Sylvester, then Councilmember D. Giovanni, then we have Councilmember Bonaventura, and, uh, Vice Mayor Das Magual.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Tom, I want to take you back to 2016. And, uh, you're thinking, and you're saying, "Okay, well, what about 2016?" I remember I mentioned your name, and you corrected me and said, "No, it's Picoletti." Do you remember that?
No, sir.
Well, I do. And, and, and ever since then, I've always strived to get it correct, because I respect that.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Even, even today, and this evening, some of the words you made mention, and this is what I like about you so much, you don't always give credit to yourself, it's always about staff and the workers. And that's what I admire about you. And when you have, and when you do that, staff follows a certain protocol, and they say, "We will do anything to make you look good." And therefore, they have made you look good. Speaking of looking good, uh, well, let me get to that in, in a second, but I re- I recall another incident, the kindness in your heart, when we had an event at Jefferson High School, and you said, and you bought tickets for all of us, and said, "Here, take it." And I says, "No, no, it's okay, but you just did it, nobody asked you to do that." That's something I'll never forget, Tom, a- and it really means a lot. But my last point that I'll make about looking good, I'm going to call you Willie Brown Jr., because you always dress sharp, no matter what the occasion is, and I see it, and, uh, you know, like to emulate you, and great job, well-deserved. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Sylvester. Uh, we now have Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, Mr. Picoletti Pazano, our, our names are not that easy for other people, but it's good that we, that, that we make sure that they know, right? You are not only a consummate, uh, professional, your kindness, I can't, I can't say enough, you know you're attached to this community, and that you actually grew up, I mean, practically here, in Daly City, in Pacifico, it's the same, it's the same community, right? So, it shows throughout your workers, when you have leadership at the top, that leadership is what dictates how things are run. And when you are, when I'm out and I see all your employees, and they're working together like a team, that is you, the leader, to set that tone, because you respect them, you care for them, and I've even heard you've been out in the field with them. Is that true? I have heard that. So, I, that, to me, I really admire. I know you don't shoot your own horn, uh, because that's not who you are, because I know you're very humble. But, um, again, like with so many people, that is a great trait that brings out the consummate professional, the consummate kind and caring person you are. And we have such a wonderful, wonderful rhythm in your department, because you set the tone. So, um, well-deserved, bravo, and take care of yourself, and we know how much you are loved. Always loved. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're one of a kind.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember D. Giovanni, and now we have Councilmember Bonaventura.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Tom, so, Tom is just, he's just a, a really nice guy that does his job well. Um, I think, Tom, what I, um, about, about your job, what I- I think, Tom, what I about about your job, what I love about you as a person and as a boss and as a leader in your job is you're very accessible, you're very open minded as to a dialogue between council and the city. I remember one time I had suggested to you to think about technology and using drones as part of your efforts to investigate pipes. And you were absolutely willing to go that route and you looked into it and you and you explored that possibility. So you were someone that was welcoming of ideas and someone that is open to change and doing things better. And for that, I think we're a better city for it. I also really admire the way you are prepared at meetings. One example in particular is I I had asked the question about why there was this smell coming out of Westlake. And I and I could tell from the answer that you gave that you knew that question was coming up and that you were prepared to to respond because you knew that that was an issue in the community that people were starting to take notice. So I admire your 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 preparedness and your willingness to to talk to us straight up about what's going on. Because you you just do a terrific job and we really, I appreciate you for your kindness as well as your professionalism. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, sir. We are still pursuing the drone technology in many different facets. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Buena Ventura. And now Vice Mayor Das Magual.
I want to keep this really short, Tom. I just really appreciate you, the work that you do. And again, the relationships you build. And hopefully, the next time another independent wrestling show comes in, we we got to go watch.
Ringside.
Ringside. I'll be there with you cheering all the heels and all the faces with you.
Look forward to it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Vice Mayor Das Magual. And thank you again, Director Picoletti, for all of the work that you do. Also, well deserved. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. It's an honor and a privilege to work here at Daly City. Thank you. And with the people I work with and for. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we are moving on to the Mayor's Organization of the Year 2021. And we have Vibes and Smiles. So Vibes and Smiles was founded as an outlet for individuals and businesses to collaborate together to promote positivity and creativity during these difficult times. Founder Amanda New wanted to create a space where she could give back to her community and support artists in showcasing their music. Vibes and Smiles not only focuses on promoting artists, but is a movement dedicated to bettering communities all over the nation by connecting music, art, and service. Amanda has always prided herself on fighting for social justice throughout her life and created this brand to inspire others to use their talents and voices for progressive change. And so meeting Amanda was really happenstance. You know, it was through, unfortunately, what was happening in our community with the anti-Asian sentiment and violence that was happening in our communities. And Amanda, you know, with a group with the Filipino Mental Health Initiative, Cultivate Labs, was already trying to figure out, well, you know, what if we do safety kits? What if we, you know, pull together to do that? But, you know, Amanda and her organization was already doing that work. And so the Filipino Mental Health Initiative was like, instead of duplicating that type of work, why don't you collaborate? And Vibes and Smiles really partnered together and was one of the organizations really through an emergency event in the community at Geller Park, stepped in and really provided free safety kits for for the community that day. And I'll never forget that. And she continues to do that throughout the Bay Area, just as you hear, with positivity and just that energy. And so I just definitely wanted to honor Vibes and Smiles for that work that they've done. And even though they're a young organization, they have done so much, partner with organizations in Daly City, such as Pacific Islanders Together and many, many others. And so at this point, congratulations, Vibes and Smiles.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, council members, city officials, city manager, everyone. I was super shocked when I found out because we really wanted to do this just to give back to the community and to create our safe community. I've been, my family has been in Daly City for over 60 plus years. I still remember when there's a Cala Foods over there instead of Ranch 99. And it means a lot to me, especially with the the rise of the violence. It meant a lot to keep our community safe because we're a small city right next to San Francisco, but we have a large population. And it was really important to me that we keep everyone safe, especially the fact that we have a lot of people who like to walk around to grocery stores just to go to parks, pick up their kids. And so it's just such a blessing to, an honor to receive this award. And especially the community to come out together to give back to their own community. Because that was what we promote is more to spread more love and compassion and to really bring everybody together to help out each own and to bring just love into the community. And I couldn't do it without my team. My team is amazing and they have really put in their volunteer hours and to do it together as a family, more so. And we not only want to give back safety kits, but we also have so many ideas planned, back to school drives, toy drives. You know, just helping unhoused family and low income family, helping out with Operation Santa Claus tomorrow, having like 11 to 12 cars out there tomorrow. Doing anything needed for the city to keep us safe and to bring the compassion back to the city that I grew up in and I love. And my daughter is going to Fernando, so it's really important to show her and the next generation to show them example of giving back and not just instant gratification. But we're here for everybody and we're doing it from the from our heart. And it's really important to show that as a community. So thank you to everyone and thank you to everyone who's been supporting us, Madam Mayor, everybody, council member. I just, it's such, it's such an honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Amanda, for all the work and your whole, what your team does. Oh, and they'll be at Operation Santa Claus. I think they're like everywhere. I mean, they're all around the area. That's that's. I noticed that they're just all around the four corners of the Bay Area. So thank you so much. I see Councilmember Buena Ventura, then Councilmember Di Giovanni.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So Amanda, I I don't know you personally, but I do know your work. Because you have left an imprint in our community by all the things that you've done. In particular, I obviously took notice of the safety kits and your collaboration with Mayor Manalo and how you all put that together. I think now more than ever, we need organizations like yours to continue to thrive because you are on a right mission and you're you're making a huge difference and making an even greater impact on on the the social justice issues that I know you care about, that your organization cares about. And all the other things that I see from your website and from talking to the mayor about all the things that you're going to be doing. I would love to be a part of that and support you in any way I can. Because I think you, your your mission is genuine, you guys, you particularly really care about what's going on in the community and you just don't remain silent. You actually really want to do something about it. And the concept that you've created with throwing in music and art and getting people interested is a very unique way of doing it. Something that I think will resonate and will capture more people into the fold. So thank you for your creativity, for doing what you're doing. We need more people, more organizations like you to make a difference. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura, Councilmember Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Amanda, got to stand next to you in that heat in the Bay Shore, but I still have my pen on my purse. That was just a little bit, but I think an organization is as good as the people in it. And watching you with Pitt, and I know that you're doing a toy drive, which I was like, wow, they're doing that too? Collecting toys and doing everything else? I know that I saw you group together and you're, you know, like you had everything on the table, everything was organized. And then next door, Teresa Fappo, and I went, wow, look at her. Then you came out, national night out, wind was blowing. It didn't matter to you what it was. You were going to show up and all of that showing up and bringing your energy, your positivity and everything that you bring. Like you said, it's about spreading love and that's something you can't put in a in a merchandise. You can't bottle it. It just has to be come from the inside. And that unconditional love is really what resonates. And I think that's what attracted, I'm pretty sure, conversations with Pitt, that that unity together. And looking forward to, that's on the 18th, right? On your busy calendar, you got a lot going on in a short period of time. But that, I think the growth happens when you do it from the right place. And we know because you were, you're you're firm in what you believe in, you're firm in your heart. And you have a path, you have a mission. It's clear. It's clear. You have found your mission in your life and just flow with it, go with it. And with God's grace, you'll be blessed. So wishing you the best and I love my little pen. When people ask about it, I refer them to your site. So I think that's a good way to advertise in my little keychain. So thank you very much for all you do and blessings will flow from you, for sure. Thank you. See you on 18th, or maybe tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Di Giovanni. And now I have Vice Mayor Das Magual.
Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, Vibes and Smiles. I've gone to numerous community events and I see you there. And I think you are very responsive to what's going on today in terms of even folks would like, what's going on in terms of mental health, depression. You know, for folks to be out there and seeing your booth, providing them with any, every resource that they need. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Das Magual. And now we have Councilmember Sylvester.
Hello, Ms. Amanda. It's great to put a name with an organization that I've heard so much about. And Councilmember Di Giovanni kind of alluded to it. I could not make it. You know, it's this COVID thing, but this PIT and collaboration, I heard about the weather, how it was hot out there. But just to let you know, my wife, son, and grandkids were out there and they really had a good time. They did run out of, was it the chicken they were selling out there? They ran out of chicken. But I've heard a lot about your organization and dying to learn more. But keep up the great work and not to be disrespectful to Tita Perla. But it sounds like you are the younger Tita Perla because you've got many, many more years to go. And with all the energy I'm hearing about you, I look forward to seeing much more. So keep it up and congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. And thank you, Amanda. Thank you for giving back and being homegrown and really showing the next generation about positivity and being able to just really give back to our communities. You know, it's it's something that we need to teach definitely the next generation and you're doing that. We'll definitely see you around because we see you everywhere.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Now we have the Mayor's Philanthropic Organization of the Year and drum roll, it goes to the Daly City Public Library Associates. So DCPLA, their mission is to support the four branches of the Daly City Public Library, Ceremonie, Bay Shore, Westlake, and John Daly, while advancing social and cultural vitality within our community. Since its inception in 2011, founded by Al Teglia, DCPLA has provided over 300,000 in funding to purchase new books of technology, refurbish and maintain library facilities and support innovative programs benefiting our community and promoting greater awareness of our valuable resources. The support of DCPLA complements but does not supplant the city's responsibility for the funding for the Daly City Libraries' operations, but helps fulfill budget gaps in an effort to serve our citizens. And so this evening, I see Ms. Victoria McBealang and also Mr. Brian Dossi on here. And it is just, I will say, continuous support from DCPLA and it never ends, you know? I think we see you multiple times at our council meetings, supporting our libraries, whether it's through technology, books, you name it. And so it was just fitting to honor all of you this evening for that amazing work.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. Thank you so much for recognizing the Daly City Public Library Associates as the philanthropic organization of the year. This was truly an amazing year for us. We celebrated our 10 year anniversary. And as you mentioned, we have awarded over $300,000 in grants to the Daly City Libraries during the past 10 years. We also awarded the first ever Daly City Youth Poet Laureate, Madeline Herr, who you'll hear from later this evening. And we also had a very successful membership drive and book sale. I'd like to take this moment to thank our Executive Director, Victoria McBealang, for her leadership and our board for all their hard work this past year. Once again, thank you so much for recognizing the DCPLA and we look forward to seeing you all at our St. Patrick's Day luncheon in March of 2022. And now, permissible, Executive Director Victoria would like to say a few words as well.
Of course. Thank you, Mr. Dossi. Ms. McBealang?
Thank you, Mayor Manalo, so much for this honor. Want to say thank you also to Brian and the entire board of the Daly City Public Library Associates, past and present. And especially to founding Executive Director Susan Brizden Smith, without whose vision we wouldn't be here today. And of course, our members and donors who make all, everything that we do possible. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your work as Executive Director, Victoria, Ms. Victoria McBealang. And now, well, every time I, do I not move? Sorry. And now we have Councilmember Buena Ventura, then Councilmember Di Giovanni, and then Vice Mayor Das Magual.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I've said this many, many times about the DCPLA, which is that you are the gift that just keeps on giving. And and I can't say that enough because really, you guys have demonstrated your commitment to our libraries and you are always finding a way to get money and to give it to the library and have a direct effect on our libraries. You have a really good board of people who are very proactive, always innovative and always looking for something to do with respect to raising money and you're not shy about asking. So we are, the the people of Daly City are direct beneficiaries of your kindness, generosity, and redemption in how you are able to raise so much money. You obviously all care about our city and our libraries. And I'm just very thankful to all of you for what you're doing. So we are very grateful and a better city for it. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura, Councilmember Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, there's a whole litany of things we can say. It does, I feel just like a little, anybody can be a member. First of all, I want to give a shout out to everyone. Tell everybody it doesn't cost much to be a, to advocate to be a member of our library and you can actually change lives, right? And take time to advocate for that. And that's what you do. You make it so that people have access, seniors. I mean, you can't put just words into what you guys do. There's, there's not enough. Sure, you come and give the grant money, but what does that grant money really do? It changes lives. It changes lives. It gives more people access. It, it gives them the hours, it gives us so much love. It gives us anything we want and it has to be our libraries. They are central, they are key. And I'm hoping, I know that we were able to get some more, you know, hiring and all that and moving forward. We can, we can expand and grow and make sure that this continues. But it's a lot of hard work that, that I want to say that DCPLA does and the board. I, it's not easy and Susan Brizden Smith, you guys are always constantly looking for things and thinking about that library, creative things and events and what have you. So we don't get to see the hours that you do, but just know it's grateful that you do what you do and you're stepping up, Brian and Victoria and your board. And it goes without notice, but just know that it is noticed. Noticed in my heart and my soul and I see how happy people are. They know that they can go get a hard book, they can get a computer, they can get things that they need. So I'm looking forward to the next one. I mean, you guys have surprised us already this year, 2021. Who knows what's around the corner? So with gratitude, much gratitude, thank you so much and bravo. Bravo to all. Please tell everyone on your board. Thank you.
Thank you. Now Vice Mayor Das Magwal.
Thank you again, Brian and Victoria. Every meeting, it just, it fills, it fills my heart to see that you're providing for our libraries, especially times like now during the pandemic, when you're coming in and fundraising and providing resources that all of our community needs. So I just want to say, short and sweet, thank you again and congratulations.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Das Magwal. I see a hand up now from Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. To the Daily City Public Library Associates, great job. I don't want to repeat everything that everyone else has had, said, but great job. I got one request and that's bring back the raffles. I will gladly donate a lot so I can win some prizes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Sylvester. On that, thank you, DCPLA, as Councilmember Bonaventura coined the gift that keeps on gifting. So thank you so much and we appreciate all the continued support for our youth seniors that go to the library. And we know that it's amazing partnership that you all provide. Thank you. And now we are moving on to our Mayor's Veteran of the Year. Mayor's Veteran of the Year 2021 is with Commander of the Veterans Foreign Wars Post 8750. And that is Commander Skip Weiss.
Thank you.
He joined the US Navy while he was still in high school. He studied at City College of San Francisco and has dedicated over 21 years of service to the Jefferson Union High School District. Congratulations.
Thank you. And, excuse me. I've been trying to figure out something to say and I am actually lost for words. But I've been the commander for a few years now and we want to get more veterans signed up, more activities. We're trying to get out there and meet the public and help the veterans that need help. That's our main goal. I know Pamela's saying, he doesn't, why is he stuttering? Because he generally talks a lot. He, he knows me. I'm lost for words. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Skip. Well deserved for what you do and your leadership at your post in Daily City and all your community service that you do for the city of Daily City and the schools. So thank you so much. I see my colleagues' hands that are raised. At this time, I will now call on Councilmember Bonaventura and Councilmember Sylvester, then Councilmember DG Ivani and Vice Mayor Das Magwal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Skip, first of all, I want to say thank you for your service. That's paramount in my gratitude towards you first and foremost. But also equally important is thank you for your service to Daily City and the veterans and the veterans' issues that you care so deeply about. I, I cannot even recall a veterans' event that I did not see you at. You're always there, bad knees and all. You still manage to get there, no matter how much in pain you might be. And you still are there with, with your hat and your regalia and, and bringing along veterans with you. I am so grateful for the sacrifices that you've made for our country and the current, and currently what you're doing to raise awareness of veterans' issues throughout Daily City and the greater community. As a side note, I am particularly interested in bringing a stand-down event here to Daily City. I know you are very familiar with those events. I actually met a veteran at a recent event and I talked to her about that. And I would love it if I could collaborate with you to try to bring something like that to Daily City. We have a lot of veterans here. You in particular are the right man to help organize that because of how much passion and care that you have for our vets. So thank you, Skip, and hopefully we can collaborate further. But you are very well deserving of this Veterans Award. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bonaventura. And now we have Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. Skip, first of all, I just wanted to let you know, thank you so much for your service. And all the veterans out there, thank you for your service because of you folks. We have the freedoms that we have today and we should never, ever forget that. It's through you, Skip, that I met the Montanos, Dre and her husband. Her husband also served. And I see you at Westlake at all the events. And I wish I could have served in the service. My dad did and I did sign up when it was time for me to sign up. I was classified 1H. And that means if I was called, I would have to go, but I was attending school. But I can't overemphasize how important it is to honor our veterans. I think we in Daily City need to stick by our word and show by our actions of how we care about the veterans. Your request to this very day has not gone unnoticed. And that is for an office or more recognition of the Veterans War Memorial Building, which is your building. And you should have an office there. But that hasn't gone unnoticed and I think we need to correct that. And Daily City should show we really do truly care about our veterans and the service they have provided us. So just to let you know, I have not forgotten. I got a good friend of mine who was my boss in the police department and he's always asking me, Glenn, when are you coming to the meeting? When are you coming to the meeting? So I hear you and I haven't forgotten. Hang in there, Skip. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we have Councilmember DG Ivani.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, yes, you're right. I do know you. And I want to say that thank you for your service to the country foremost and to the members of that post who we all know stand strong and are great veterans and served our country. Hector James and even the Women's Auxiliary when they stand together and they come here. So I know everybody has said almost everything there is to say, other than I know I don't want you to get choked up over this. And just, you've got to keep your health going and look after yourself and take care of yourself. And that's very important as well. And I see you're doing well now. So that's good. That's great, Skip. And take care of yourself, right? You're doing great. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Now we have Vice Mayor Das Magwal.
My short, I just want to say thank you, Skip, for your service and you deserve everything that, that, that we recognize you for, for Veterans, Veteran of the Year. And I think it's important that we recognize the work that you all do. And, you know, having family that are veterans and seeing what they go through and seeing the work that you do for the veterans from Daily City. I appreciate everything that you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you so much for all that you do, Skip. We are very grateful and happy to see you always. And thank you for your leadership at the post and for all that you do for our community. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we are at the Mayor's 2021 Volunteer of the Year. Ray Satori, current Board Member and previous President of the Filipino Binyanhan Resource Center. Ray has been a Planning Commissioner since 2015. And as a Daily City resident for over 30 years, Ray is dedicated to serving his community day in and day out. One thing on here, he's also very active in the Lions Club of Daily City. He's volunteered his time, his energy, and his passion for the community for many decades.
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor. How are you? Thank you very much. Can I be given a piece of my thought?
Of course, you have the floor.
Okay. Honorable Mayor of Daily City and the members of Honorable Council. Well, I'm truly humbled by this award accorded by the Mayor, Justice Lee Manalo, for the year 2021. I think this is the first time that I, this award will be given by the city of Daily City, Volunteer of the Year. Well, your honor, volunteerism is the basic expression of human relationship. It is about people needs to participate in societies or peer group and to feel that matters to the others. My paradigm in life began, my volunteerism work, which started way back in the YMCA of the Philippines during my college days. Because the YMCA believes, strongly believes that the relationship is intrinsic to volunteer work, be as critical to individual and community well-being. The ethos of volunteerism is infused with values and good virtues. Your honors, I came here to Daily City 31 years ago. Vibes is infused with values and virtues of volunteerism. And I would say it deals volunteerism with communities' well-being. I started here with Sister Daily Series, dealing with all the festivities here with the Filipino-American. Then voluntarily, eventually volunteered as a planning commissioner in 2001. I have an entregnum of class, I think three years because I, I was appointed in the state board. For the sake of, I would say, my passion for well-being of the community and to participate in the growth and development of our great city. There are three ways which we can help. We can volunteer. First is giving our time. Second is giving our talent or technical know-how, gratis et amoris, or giving donation to one or giving our treasure in any way which we can contribute. I've been a member of Shelter Network, which deals primarily with youth and homelessness. Also with the Daily City Host Lions Club. I have been a former president and director that deals with seniors and youth. I can see Brian Dossi is now the current president. Home Owners Association of Sarabista for almost 10 years, I've been the president. Knights of Columbus of St. Augustine Chapter. And lastly, with the Filipino Binyanhan Resource Center, which primarily deals with a lot of pillam issues for the sake of harmony and good dimension of community building with the city and its people. Why am I citing these things, your honor? I remember Greta Thunberg of Sweden, a very young, tender age. She gave her time. Greta Thunberg is from Sweden. Has been named as one of the greatest young people in the world. Volunteerism in America is 90 million hours of time-giving by the conscious American, according to Asian Horror Foundation and the Volunteers of America. That is why America is still the greatest country in the world. Taking cognizance of love of country, love of God, and love of humanity. Despite all the disasters, the pandemic, and our disagreement, to all the pundits, I applaud all of you to value the time, meaning of volunteerism. Without anything in return, I have volunteered in social, community, community building, but also in political volunteerism, hoping and dreaming that all of you, we can be partners in growth and development, peace and harmony of the Daily City. Either by donation or by giving my time and effort, all of you, I have helped giving my time and effort in donation because I believe that we can be partners in growth, peace, and harmony in the city. Finally, I would like to thank again Justice Lee Manalo, Mayor, for the significant award. I, this recognition that will be part of my achievement in the American spirit. And to the city manager, Shona, I'll be the city management for your kind understanding and support to us. Hopefully it will be, you just be patient with us. Sometimes there was some disagreement, but it's part of the dynamics of whether social, political, or economic in aspect. Lastly, I would like to call JFK. Us, that what the government can give you, but us, what we can give the government. And people of the world, us, that what America can do for you, but us, together, we can do for the betterment of the humanity. With this, your honor, thank you very much. I accept this humble. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that eloquent speech on volunteerism and for all you've done in your life around your civic duty just to give back to the community and your passion. Thank you so much for all that you do. I see hands raised. We have Councilmember Bonaventura, then Councilmember DG Ivani. Then I have Vice Mayor Das Magwal and Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, Ray, I mean, you have done really so much. And what you've listed is just a small microcosm of the amount of work that you've done in the community. And I know you're not done. I know that you are, there's still much more that you want to do. From, you know, what you've done from PPRC to your work on suing the county for redistricting. to advancing immigrant rights, um to setting up the Daly City Kazan City Sister City Committee. From your generous, just generous contributions to typhoon reliefs, community feeds, and your, your, you're sharing your wisdom and your experiences in mentoring people, uh including myself. Uh, you have been a great mentor and ally. You were the one who took me in your wings and you got me involved in PPRC. You were the one who pushed me there. You were the one who got me into the Knights of Columbus uh Foundation for Development Developmentally Disabled Children. You were the one that got me into the Filipino Democratic Club. And ultimately, you were the one that brought me to the Daly City Council. Uh, so I owe a tremendous amount to you, Ray. And I've learned really so much from you. You are a wise man with tremendous instinct and someone with just a pure heart of gold. You're also someone that is completely fearless. You are unafraid to speak your mind and to tell it like it is. And what I get from you is that you are just an honest and genuine man uh who um is, I I am just so honored to have you as my friend. It's, you, you, you're, you're, you're not even just a friend to me, Ray. You're like a family member to me. Thank you for uh your love of Daly City, uh your love of your community and the issues that you care about. Um, we, we, I, I just can't say thank you enough for all the things that you do. You are such a good person. And someone that is just willing to share uh uh your love with everybody. You're very well deserving of this award, Mr. Satori, and I am humbled to just be your friend. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Bonaventura. And now we have Councilmember Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Satori, it is well known you really love your community and your involvement has been from the get-go. And that the things that you do, you have put so many hours, if they had, if they counted them up of your activity, it would be endless of all the things that you love in this community, your commitment. I served with you on the Planning Commission and seeing you where you have, I like that you have your own mind. And if, when you read your materials and you, when you speak, you speak from the inside out. And that is really something to be like, I would think, thankful for and that we all should learn from. We should always speak from our own self and not, nothing else influences. So from the Lions, from VPRC, for, and not just, not just organizations, right? Cause I heard tell that you also do a lot of individual things in the community and that no one probably even knows. So that goes without saying. And some people see you and they know that you're doing something in the community, but you do a lot of things quietly as well. So, and you don't boast. And that, when you don't boast about it, that is another attribute. So that it continues to be what resonates at all. So there's lots of blessings and love and good health. And you have many more years to come, like Tita Perla. So you guys are not just, you can't take all those years and wrap it into one minute or even tonight. So that needs to be recognized as of our, as recorded in some manner at some point. So thank you very much. And thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And now we have Vice Mayor Das Magual.
Congratulations, Mr. Satori. I look up to you. One of my first experiences going from being a library board trustee to a planning commissioner. I didn't know what I was getting myself into, honestly. I walked in there, sat there, and I watched you from abroad. And one thing that I really truly appreciated was your fight, your tenacity, your passion. And that look in your eye, like you're not going to take any BS from anybody. And when I saw that, that reminds me of my uncles and my dad that shows that passion. Like if you believe in something, you better fight for it. So thank you, Ray. You deserve it. And to continued mentorship and guidance from you, I appreciate you. Thanks again.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Das Magual. And now we have Councilmember Sylvester.
Uh, Mr. Satori, I first would like to congratulate you on receiving this award. Apparently, as per your statement, this is the first time ever. So I'd like to thank Mayor Manalo for acknowledging you. I want to keep this pretty short, but listening to your points on volunteerism tells me, and it shows me that you have done by your volunteerism the work of a thousand people, or it could even be ten thousand people. For every one other person that we can find like you, the world would be a better place. So I wish to thank you, and I'm not going to quote an actual scripture, although I know the actual scripture. But I feel that no one should go forward unless they go through you. Congratulations, Mr. Satori.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Can I say one more?
Of course.
You know, sometimes being straight as an arrow, sometimes I, I offended some people in the city. And I would say that, be a culpa, be a culpa, be a culpa. And I, I am not really a good politician or I'm more of a businessman. So uh my family says, you're not a good politician, so you better stay out of it. So I, I sometimes I, I pivot myself in, in, in discussion, but I will be a good political volunteer to, to, to the five of you. For as long as there is the so-called uh political dynamism and as John Payne would say, there should be a political compromise to avoid any disagreement or conflict or being disagreeable. This is the last thing I could say. I will help all of you. No problem about it. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Satori, um for all your service, um really genuine that you care um and really passionate about your fierce advocacy. I think it, it was mentioned earlier on how uh when you want to see justice done, you take it in its reins. And you are there at the forefront. And in many other endeavors, whether it's through um your philanthropy or through giving of your time and energy, we thank you and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And, and now we've come to the Mayor's Woman of the Year Award 2021. And it is for Marie Villarosa, who is the Marketing and Events Manager for Ceramonte Shopping Center. Marie was raised in Daly City since the age of eight and is now raising two children with her husband. She thoroughly enjoys serving the community and is involved in several nonprofits. She is the president of the Filipino Binyanhan Resource Center um on the executive board as secretary for the Daly City Colma Chamber of Commerce, Board of Director for the North Peninsula Food Pantry and um Marketing and Communications Chair for the Daly City Host Lions Club. She is on the Skylines College President Breakfast Committee and was past president and was previously the Director of the Daly City Public Library Associates. In her spare time, Marie likes to read mystery novels, learn something new, and take road trips with her family. And so huge, uh huge congratulations. Um, as you can tell, she is a, a one busy woman that gives back to the community.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Um, I am extremely honored. I think I'm still in shock because I'm still shaking. But I just want to thank you for this honor. Um, you know, when I think my family, my husband, my kids, who are always there to help me, um, you know, I push them. Uh, whether it's shoveling snow on an event, stuffing bags for a food giveaway, or simply supporting me in all of my to-do list. To my mom, just, you know, thank you for instilling a really strong work ethic, um work hard, play hard. Um, to my work, Ceremony Center, Regency Centers, just really for allowing me to balance work, family, and my love for the community. Um, to my colleagues and the rest of the Board of Directors and the PPRC, the North Peninsula Food Pantry, uh, the Daly City Colma Chamber of Commerce, the Daly City Host Lions Clubs, um, and all of our partnerships with the city of Daly City, the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Library and Recreation. Um, thank you for allowing me to serve with you. I mean, it's a lot of hard work, but it's a lot of fun. I am grateful um to work alongside each and every one of you. And this is the best birthday gift ever. So thank you.
It's your birthday today.
Tomorrow, tomorrow. Early birthday.
It's your birthday already in the Philippines.
That's true.
Early birthday.
Yeah, my mom's celebrating. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Congratulations. I see Councilmember Bonaventura.
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so Marie, I mean, you talk about to-do lists. Man, you have probably the longest that I have ever, ever uh been a part of when, when I see you work. I just, I, I don't know how you do it. I mean, you are involved in just about everything that I see that's Daly City. And not only are you involved, but you, you do it really well and organized and meticulous and and it just, there's nothing that you miss. I mean, I, I, I remember seeing you one time and we were at a meeting and ideas were coming up and you were more about, let's execute, what can we do? How do we get this done? You know, you were just boom, boom, boom. And I admired that. And I've been actually meaning to tell you that for the longest time. That I really admire the way you work because you're results oriented. You're not just talk, but you try to find a way to get things done. And you, you're not afraid to do the little things from um disinfecting masks to um, you know, passing out food, to raising money, to uh not being afraid to call uh people and ask them for donations and and or asking for event locations. I mean, you seem to know everybody. Um, and you just are, are one of those people that we could rely on you for anything. And we are we're, we're just so grateful. I mean, you are very well deserving of this award. And I think this is another great pick. It's a long time coming. It's something that you probably should have gotten a long time ago because of what, all the things that you've done for our community. So I've never said thank you to you before. And this time, I'm taking this opportunity to really thank you and mean it and let everybody know how great you've been and continue to do a lot for Daly City. So thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm going to cry.
You're good.
Thank you, Councilmember Bonaventura. Now we have uh Councilmember Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Marie, if your mom's watching, Tita Best, you, that's your baby girl, and you have done a great job. I'm sure she's watching somewhere, I hope. Is she watching in the Philippines?
She is supposed to.
But anyway, you have an infectious smile, first of all, and we know where that comes from. And when we see your face, like even in the Facebook, I'm like, oh my God, she just finished over a ceremony. And now she's got her kids over Great America. And then she turns around and then she's like, can harvest? And then you're back at the recreation. Um, I mean, in awe is not enough, but you do it. I think the energy comes because of your, of, once again, nobody can do all these things, not unless you're doing it for the right reasons. Not unless you're doing it with the love in your heart, not unless you're doing it with God's help. That is really just what people serve. And that's where the energy comes from. Because it's, no one else could even match you bar none. For any of like, when I go to places and, you know, I talked to Carla that night, and nobody can match your marketing. Nobody can match your passion, your creativity. There's not, no one, no bar, that none of us could reach that at all. And the love of your family. I turn around, your husband's there, your, your sons are there. And, and they're like, oh, you're helping mommy. And I mean, that is such a beautiful thing. Like people think a mall. No, it's not a mall. It's community. And you have, you have made it that way. It is you have made it that way. And I think that these bosses are getting the hint because we have to keep that going. And that's just who we are. And if you need support on pushing that, I'm sure the council will be happy to do that because it has been the hub for everything, everything. And during COVID, you're trying to put smiles on their faces, you know, with the little carriage ride or, you know, snow when it's hot outside and I mean, unbelievable, and try to give them hot cocoa in line, just sitting back and watching all that. And just a moment of, of smiles. I don't even know if you're able to realize how many people you have reached. I don't, really don't know. And sometimes it does bring tears because sometimes I go around the corner and I go, wow, this woman never stops. Then yesterday, Operation Santa Claus. I know where you're going to be tomorrow. No doubt. So um we are very blessed to have you in the community. It is your community as well, of course. And um with God with God's grace and looking forward for your mom to come back as well, so I can see her in the office with you.
Working.
Working. Another addition, right? Another helping hands. But blessings and love always. And it's a treasure to know you from the inside out. Yes, why you, we know, we just put it on there that you're beautiful. But truly, Marie, you are really beautiful inside and out. And that is a rarity. And that is much appreciated. So bless you. Thank you so much. Great gratitude and humbleness and honor. Thank you very much. God bless you.
Thank you so much.
This was a tough one.
Thank you. Now we have Vice Mayor Das Magual.
Want to say congratulations to you, Marie. You, you know, I'm just reinforcing everything that everybody said. Um, but it doesn't surprise me. It reminds me of all the, the pen lies in my life that are so strong and doing everything with so much grace. So thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Das Magual. And um, yes, definitely agree with that. She does it so much with grace and she does so much. And now we have uh Councilmember Sylvester. Just making sure. Okay, okay.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, Marie, listening to you at the beginning, your speech was so short and succinct. And I want to reiterate part of your speech, which I want to start off with. First of all, I'd like to thank your husband and your family. The second I would like to thank is Regency Center for allowing Daly City to share you with us. Because if you didn't have the support of them, you would not be doing everything that you are doing now. So I agree with you, your family and Regency Centers in sharing you with us. All too often, I see posts on Nextdoor that tries to compare Ceramonte with Tan Faran. And if you take time to read some of the posts, they say Ceramonte surpasses Tan Faran in any and in all ways, shape and form. I remember the, the pandemic where we had food insecurity. And I reached out to you and asked, can we get food service? And I reached out to you and asked, can we get food service? Was it harvest? And to come out to Ceramante, you were right there and you were willing to assist. It's those little things that go a long way, Marie. And we see them. And it is obvious because of you getting the award tonight, we have seen them. I know you do not ask for accolades because you do it out of the goodness of your heart. I know you, Marie, and I see you. And when I do see you, I try to make it short because I know you're too busy. And I like to see you do more. So keep up the great work, uh, Marie. Congratulations. Once again, we all love you. Great job. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. My cousins.
Thank you so much for all you do and you do it with that smile and, uh, that robust energy all the time. And, uh, it's, it is long overdue for all the community work you've done over these year, years and what you continue to do. So, Tita, if you're watching out there, I'd be very proud. You have an amazing daughter. And so, um, congratulations again, Marie.
Thank you.
And now for the, the final awards of the evening. It is the Mayor's 2021 Youth of the Year Award. And, uh, last but not least, we know that the youth are our future. They are our leaders, not only in the future, but our leaders today. And our Mayor's Youth of the Year Award 2021 is for Victor Duarte. From the recommendation of Luis Magallanes, who works directly with the Jefferson High School students. I'm, I'm grateful for his recommendation as Victor Duarte. He is a captain of the soccer team at Jefferson High School. The team was without a coach for a long time. And so Victor took the lead and kept the team together acting as a coach. And it's really amazing that, to see a young person step up into that role. And, uh, the students really respect him. But even with, uh, stepping into the role of being a coach, you know, he's a senior in high school, he has his school academics, he's also has a part-time job. And so he balances his part-time job and school and sports all together. And so, um, I'd like to honor him as one of the Youth of the Year Award. And he is not on here as, uh, you can tell. It is because he is working at the moment. Um, and so we will, uh, be, um, sending him his award. But congratulations, Victor Duarte. When you watch the video, congratulations. And now we have, um, our, uh, another Youth of the Year, the final recipient of the evening, and it is Ms. Madeline Herr. She's a senior at Oceana High School and serves as a student trustee for the Jefferson Union High School District and a member of the Associated Student Body Congress. Madeline is also our first Daily City Youth Poet Laureate. And her poetry is influenced by feminism and youth empowerment. Um, and I am so excited, uh, to also, uh, welcome her because she will be also gracing this, the diocese evening to share and, uh, her poem called Living City.
Um, first, thank you so much for this award. It was really unexpected and I'm extremely honored. Since starting high school, I've been looking for ways to make an impact in my community, whether that was through community service, applying for positions at school or supporting various organizations. However, since the Youth Poet Laureate Competition, I have been exposed to endless opportunities to use my writing, um, which was really once a simple hobby, and hone it to be used for something useful. And it also connected me to the strong community that exists here and has given me one of the best high school experiences that I could ask for. So I'm really grateful. And I'm so glad to be part of this community and, um, working with the amazing Daily City Library Associates who have supported me in so many ways and have given me all these opportunities. I have grown so much with the support of this whole community. And my eyes have been open to the importance of leadership and community in high school. And I've also seen how hardworking the people here are and it is extremely admirable. And I am very honored. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much, uh, Madeline, and for your dedication to give back to the community and also your inspiration to find ways to contribute. Um, at a very young age, it's super inspirational to see. And as I mentioned, you know, you're not only our future leaders, you are our leaders today. And so, congratulations. I see, uh, Councilmember Di Giovanni's hand up.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Well, Madeline, you're, you're a big inspiration for all ages, I have to say. And Eileen, I know in Victoria's and so many people are D C P L A and in our community support you and even in your future endeavors, wherever you go. And I know that your writings, they, how they express, and I've read quite a few of them, and so proud of you. And, and, and you have a bright future. Like you said, the doors open. There's many doors to open and you'll know the right one because you're grounded and you know the direction that you're headed. And the world, you have such a gift. And you're sharing your gift with us and so humble and grateful for you to take the time to even share a part of us. And then, you know, with Eileen at the county. And again, I have to tell Victoria because she's a big fan and she's always there for her and will always be there. So you have us anytime you want, anytime you need. And we're blessed to have you in our community, period. Your talent is, uh, is tremendous. So thank you very much and congratulations and look forward to all your future endeavors. And looking forward to hearing your poetry tonight. Thank you. Thank you for blessing us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Di Giovanni, and Vice Mayor Das Magual.
Congratulations to you, Madeline. Um, I can't wait to hear your poetry. I think that, um, I wrote a poem that was called, um, "A Poet is a Policemaker." And I said, "You are the paradigm shift that needs to happen. Your poems become policy as we ritualize new ways of being." You know, you challenge the closed mind with your stories, struggle, survival, imagination. Culture shifts politics, and that's what a poet does. And congratulations again, Madeline.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Das Magual. And at this, uh, juncture, we, uh, now, um, have the opportunity to hear from our Daily City Youth Poet Laureate, Madeline Herr.
Um, so the poem, oh, oh, is it? Oh, okay, okay.
Right here. Can I hear?
I'm gonna try and increase the volume. Just give me a second here.
Thank you, Stephen.
Okay, I would recommend you all turn your volume up to the max because I have it maxed out on my end.
Oh. Where is that? Can I hear?
We, we still can't hear, hear it, uh, Stephen.
Yeah.
Okay, um, give me one more minute. Let me try starting it all over again.
Uh, Stephen, do you have your shared, um, audio on? Share computer audio?
I think so. Um, let me see if I'm doing that.
I'm wondering if we could be so bold as to ask Ms. Madeline Herr to, to read it for us, uh, on the spot. It seemed like she was possibly ready. Madeline, are you there? Are you okay with just letting you see this, uh, live? Awesome.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Okay, this is my poem, "Living City." "In early mornings, the beaches and a distant city clear. After a long journey, a silent fog creeps in quietly and rests upon laughter-filled shoulders, the rooftops of these streets. Chilled fog fades when the air warms and melts, seeps into the soil in my garden bed. Red fruits paint streets red under carts brimming with endless selflessness. Tireless, undrinking feet carrying fruit pigments until the sky reflects fall colors. In the midst of a blur, wings ruffle on wires like blooming flowers. Seagulls who've long since lived here imitate the city's inhabitants, scourging beneath unlit clouds and dripping dew, building, living on the tips of its toes, always hovering, always alive in this vibrant city. Vibrant grass growing from cracked cement, glowing kitchen lights and loud nighttime music, shoulder the rails, backpacks and carts, warm aromas of family dinners, plumes of karaoke drifting out of chimneys in late afternoons. The city is a bird, birds soaring over street signs, over a wave, a gateway, the epicenter of booming pride, of rumbling trains going to beaches, to busy downtowns like the movies. Don't blink or you'll miss it. The fog settled on top of this city. Birds follow magnetic waves and call the city home. Unspoken greetings between neighbors and the exchange of budding flowers. Behind alike structures, the backyards intertwine. The remnants of the day echoes in late-night breezes, electrifies you with the perseverance that colors the dreams of all the residents here. It's never silent in this busy city. The arteries from Geller to Westlake to Bay Shore form the never-ending migrating formation of thousands of birds. And once, I heard in a children's tale, birds will abandon its flock to save another, will leave its steady routine to wait and tend to another, to nourish them and lift them. But the song they sing will never leave. It is woven in us and this I have seen. Of course, it's not perfect, but the air has never sealed and these determined footsteps have never slowed and that's what makes the city living. Under our dissipating fog, where roots dig deeper and songs sing louder, listen and you'll hear it. In unison, the whole city hums."
Thank you so much, Madeline, and thank you for gracing us with the poetry, life, um, and, and sharing that. That is just, uh, beautiful and, um, just, I'm gonna just envision all those parts of, uh, your poem. And, and that's really about it. The community that we live in and all the beautiful parts of it. So thank you very much. Let's give her another round of applause. Thank you. I see Councilmembers Sylvester's hand raised.
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor. Uh, Madeline, I've tried so often to write poems. And, and the way I learned was to make things rhyme. Yours did not rhyme, but as I listened to it, it really reflects Daily City and how you've covered it. When you mentioned seagulls or the birds, I think of St. Francis, the shopping area and all the birds there. Don't blink, don't drop something on the ground because they will come at it and come get it. All the way through the other side of the Bay Shore. I have to commend you. That was so beautiful. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Madeline. That was outstanding. I really loved that. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. And thank you for your service to the community, Madeline. And, uh, being our very first inaugural Daily City Poet Youth Laureate. You know, you and, um, Victor, as I mentioned, you both are, are, are leaders today and are current leaders in our community. So thank you for that. You know, uh, at this time, I, I just want to say thank you for everyone that's tuning in. I will conclude with this, you know, 2021 has been such a year. I think, uh, both filled with hopes as vaccines were rolled out and disseminated into the hands of our community. But it was also a time of continued reflection and action on social equity. I'd like to conclude by ensuring that I thank my family first and foremost. My husband, who's watching with my children right now, who's always been by my side, supporting me in public service. I'm also, uh, so grateful. We're a team. And to my parents, Josie and Lito, helping me raise my kids, it helps me do the work I do for the community. I could not do this without you. My sister Carly and nieces, I am grateful for all your love and positive energy. To my dear friends, all the way from elementary, high school and college, and those that I've met along the way to now, thank you from the bottom of my heart. To my children, little E and baby J, thank you for sharing your mama with the community. We are creating change together. I'd also like to thank, um, our partners such as Assembly Member Phil Ting, Senator Scott Wiener, Supervisor David Canepa, the Board of Supervisors, and also to my colleagues, could not do this work with each and every one of you. I'd like to thank the City Manager, City Attorney and all the departments. From the City Manager's Office, we have Angie, we have Stephen, Leilani, City Attorney's Office, the City Clerk's Office, the Economic and Community Development, Finance and Administrative Services, our firefighters from the North County Fire Authority, Human Resources, our Library and Recreation Services, our Police, Public Works, Waste and Water Resources. I mention each and every department here because it is a team effort. Having what we've endured in 2020 and moving into 2021, we knew that we needed to respond to the pandemic. And so what we were able to do is provide hazard pay for grocery and, uh, drugstore workers, providing them and unanimously adopted emergency hazard pay. We provided emergency- We provided emergency rental assistance, about 2 million in emergency rental assistance for low-income households. We provided emergency meals to second course. That's about 19,500 home-delivered meals to 100 older, 150 older adults. We knew that the allocation of ARPA was so important. About 3.6 million is going to be used for eviction protection through free legal support, direct economic relief to immigrant families, building a brand-new childcare facility, grants to struggling restaurants and small businesses, and expanding capacity for emergency food distribution, and looking at ways to have a digital, to overcome the digital divide. So there'll be an installation of free Wi-Fi in the Bay Shore and expanding Wi-Fi at six community centers, and looking at technologies such as laptops and Wi-Fi hotspots. We also knew it was so important to us to support our small businesses. In February of 2021, we started our Small Business Commission. Also, we did MECO, having the opportunity in conjunction with San Mateo County for people to have home kitchens so that they're able to provide for their families with that extra income. We also, in April of 2021, approved two ordinances to allow cannabis businesses to operate in Daily City. Also, one that we did pass very earlier on is to increase the minimum wage in Daily City. By January 1, 2022, it will be $15.53, and that will be much higher than the state's law. And so I just wanted to also share that, you know, we also did work on improving our emergency response. We piloted the Mental Health Clinician Program in partnership with the county for the Community Wellness and Crisis Response Team. We implemented body-worn cameras that was, that was implemented in October of this year. And one that has been long overdue, we restored Engine 95. And we knew that this was something the community was looking forward towards for a very long time, and together with the community restoring and reinstating Engine 95 had come to fruition this year. And with everyone's support. You know, one thing I know that is extremely important that we've heard on the daily is ensuring that there's housing development and affordable housing. You know, there is a huge development that is being built with affordable units, about over 555 units being built and is under construction in the Bay Shore. Also recently, we did an all-electric 75-unit development called The Hub, and that's where the location of, you know, the Filipino named streets are. We're going to receive affordable housing funding, about 3 million over the next five years. And we also launched Clean Daily City. It's really in a robust initiative to combat illegal dumping and litter in our communities. So it stands for Clean Livable Environment and Neighborhoods, the Clean Program. We were able to restore our library hours and also really are looking at huge projects like the Vista Grande Drainage Based Improvement Project, recycled water and groundwater management. Also, we saw during the pandemic that the importance of our public parks was so huge when we wanted to, you know, have that opportunity to just have some, some air out there. And so we did renovate Geller Park and also other areas within the city of Daily City. Also, through the Peninsula Clean Energy, 97% of Daily City electricity customers use green electricity from wind, solar and hydro resources. And about 1.3, 1.3 million dollars were saved by our residents. So you should all be very proud. You know, this year, what we did see as well, that reared its ugly head was we, we saw the acts of violence and we need to address, we needed to address hate, racism and xenophobia. And so this year, for a start, the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Training for elected officials, appointed officials and all staff started. But this is only the beginning. We also continued United Against Hate Week to ensure that everyone in the community stands together and united against hate. We also continued our programming, our inclusive community programs all throughout the year. And one thing that we do have now that I'm also very proud of is that we have a lactation lounge here in the city of Daily City. So if you are a resident or someone coming into our chambers when we open up and you need a facility such as a lactation lounge, it is open to staff and the public at City Hall. So this was important to see because if someone needed this, you know, we have this readily available. We also expanded our sister-city relationships. And also with, last and not least, the Daily City Age Friendly Task Force continued its work. In 2021, you know, we recognized important events, cultural heritage and celebrations and initiatives to generate awareness. And in 2021, the City Council promoted new ideas of which were related to ensuring that our, our city continues to stay and become a welcoming place for all. And so we did Communities United Day, Immigrant Heritage Month, Black Business Month and National American Indian Heritage Month. And the City Council also highlighted National Human Trafficking Awareness Month for the very first time, and Mental Health Awareness Month to reduce the stigma around mental health, especially during the pandemic. So I want to say thank you for, to my colleagues for giving me the opportunity to serve this 2021 year. And I'm deeply humbled to been able to serve the residents and the community of the city of Daily City. So thank you very much. At this juncture, I now motion to adjourn the 57th City Council Meeting. Thank you very much.
I go ahead in second?
I can invite Vice Mayor. Thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. And now I'm calling to order of the 58th City Council Meeting for the city of Daily City. At this juncture, is Madame City Clerk on?
I am.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. May we have roll call, please?
Certainly. Mr. Buena Ventura?
Present.
Dr. Rod?
Here.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present. Thank you very much, Madame City Clerk. At this time, this is the nominations for the office of the mayor. And I will now nominate Vice Mayor Das Magwal.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any other nominations for the office of mayor? Seeing none, motion to close the nominations, please. All in favor?
So move.
Thank you.
Don't move.
All right. I heard two so moves. That's a second. So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. So may we have a roll call vote, please, for Vice Mayor Das Magwal, for mayor for the city of Daily City.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
With good consciousness due to prior actions, I abstain.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye, thank you very much. That is four. Congratulations. Congratulations, Mayor Das Magwal. I am very happy to turn this over to you. You take the floor.
Wow. I'm speechless right now. I'm so speechless right now. I want to call on my wife to take the oath of office. Is that okay right now?
Of course.
I know she's an attendee, Dr. Arlene Das Magwal. I don't know how that will work if the mediator can lift Arlene into a panelist or something?
And promote it, mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Leilani.
There she is.
Hi, everybody. Congratulations, Rod, or Mayor Rodrick Das Magwal. I'm here to give you your oath. Aye?
Aye.
State your name.
Rodrick Rania Das Magwal.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear.
That I will bear.
True faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon.
The duties upon.
Which I am about to enter.
Which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Mayor Rodrick Das Magwal. We love you so much.
Thank you, mama.
There's your children.
Hi, babies. I guess, wow. I have a few words to say on my behalf, and I'm going to do this a little bit differently. I know sometimes people would just go out and write a speech, but I decided to write a letter. And it's called Dear Daily City. Dear Daily City, I'm a SoCal boy who fell in love with the Daily City fog as it flows through the rolling hills peppered with little boxes on the hillside made of tiki-taki. It became my home where my wife and I have created our foundation and raising our family. My mentor, friend, confidant and historian, the late Dr. Don Vuhulana Mobadun said, "I realized that a community worth about, worth writing about was worth a community preserving. As your new mayor, it is my responsibility to fight, to advocate, to care, to dream, to envision and to serve our community. To take our imaginations of hope and manifest them into reality, to listen to our elders, our youth, our families, our workers, our residents, and fight for issues such as affordable housing, a more greener community, and to fight for mental health. Dear Daily City, it's been a rough year. COVID-19 has flipped our world upside down. It has intensified social issues such as racism and violence, food insecurity, and especially our wellness. To the young people navigating the pandemic, losing out on prom or graduation from online learning to being back in person and balancing the type of succeeding in school and navigating this pandemic I can't even imagine. I empathize with the parents who are trying to keep, keep it together, keep a smile on their face and tell their babies it's going to be all right. To our essential workers serving our community day in and day out, your service is valued and appreciated. In committing towards a healthy and well-daily city, I strive for what mentors and colleagues of mine, Dr. Allison Tintian Kokubalis, Dr. Jeff Duncan Andrade and Glenda Makatangai call for community responsive wellness that draws upon harmonizing of mind, body, emotion and spirit, and creating healthy relationships by acknowledging and being responsive to the lived experiences and the historical and material conditions that shape our world. Our wellness is connected to the sacred link between self-actualization and community actualization in three domains. One, the inner self, where one has a strong sense of culture, identity and agency. The second layer, the interpersonal, where we are rooted and committed to showing empathy toward family, community and peers. The interconnectedness of our community to project a positive interrelatedness to ancestors' place, land and the natural world. This grows an ecosystem where people and communities experience place, power, purpose, awareness, resilience, empathy, hope, love and joy. In committing to community responsive wellness, I am pleased to begin my term as mayor by joining the San Mateo County Mayor's Health Initiative, a countywide effort to raise awareness and drive change that will help our residents truly recover from the mental health effects of this pandemic. This initiative seeks to raise awareness regarding resources available to address mental health needs as well as increase access to mental health resources and therapy options in our community. I am proud to join 11 other incoming mayors in this initiative and look forward to taking significant steps in the upcoming year to address mental health needs in our community. Dear Daily City, I'm giving my whole self in terms of my mind, body and soul to serve to work with my fellow council members, staff and community heal from this unprecedented trauma of this pandemic. My wife, Dr. Arlene Das Magwal, expressed through her work Critical Leadership Praxis, where our leadership is a relationship between your knowledge of self and serving the community. She expressed that home is a space to create healing from oppressive trauma and to offer the possibilities of hope to develop a sustainable lifelong pursuit of social justice. This hope and change is grounded by the work of our Daily City staff. Thank you to City Manager Shauna Malpe, Assistant City Manager Stephen Stolti, City Attorney Rose Zimmerman, Leilani Ramos, Charlie Morrow and Angie Padilla. To my council, to my colleagues on council, we may not see eye to eye on certain issues, but we are all here for the same thing, to better our beloved city. Thank you to Pamela Di Giovanni. You're like Daily City's biggest cheerleader and hope we can rally together and help turn the corner in recovering from this pandemic. Thank you to Glenn Sylvester. I learned a lot from you observing your keen approach of analysis, your dissection of budgets and negotiations and your practical methods of making our city better. I hope we can continue our relationship for this upcoming year. Thank you to Ray Buena Ventura. Your simple belief in me made me realize that one day I can be mayor and today I joined the ranks of mayorship. Thank you for your continued guidance and mentorship. I'm looking forward to learning more from you and crystallize our vision into existence. Thank you to our outgoing mayor, Justlyn Manalo. You're my sister in the struggle. You're one of the strongest Panais I know. Being, being a supportive wife, being a mother to two young children, working full-time, being mayor. I sometimes wonder if you I sometimes wonder if you ever sleep. I'm so fortunate to ride with you as your vice mayor because you showed me the type of tenacity, passion, grit, determination, and intelligence in what it takes to be mayor. I will lean on you for your guidance, friendship, and camaraderie for this upcoming year. Thank you to my family from the Philippines, Canada, Hawaii, Las Vegas, Southern and Central California, and throughout the Bay Area for streaming live to witness this historic event. Thank you to my fraternity brothers in SoCal Theta Delta Beta, to my Skyline College family, students, staff, and faculty from the Cababine Learning Community and the Cypher Hip-Hop Learn Community for allowing me to live out my dreams to teach ethnic studies at the college level. I also want to acknowledge my Das family, especially Alan, Michelle, Michael, Mama Nancy, and Father Jimmy for always making the trek from Long Beach to Daly City when we need help. To my older brother, Manon Richard Magwal, his wife Denise, and children Zoe and Zara, I love you all, and please make a trip back to Daly City one of these days. It's been a minute. To my Papa, Amante Magwal and his partner, Tita Mila Asidio, I love you with all my heart. I sometimes wish that Daly City and Riverside, California were minutes away. I miss and love you so much. My cousins, Lauren Das and Ayalim, thank you for your unconditional love and support. Thank you to my chosen family, the Pinoy-Pinay Educational Partnerships, who continue to ground, educate, and love me. I would not be here if it wasn't for this community. To the Tintian Kokubales family, Allison Val Mahalaya Moka, I love you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you for being our constant in our ever-changing and transforming world. Thank you to my children, Amiana and Razon. You are my medicine after long emotional city council meetings. Your hugs, kisses, cuddles, and I love yous have repaired my heart time and time again. To my wife, Arlene Das Magwal, you are you are the Kobe to my Shaq, the sun to my moon, the perfect verse over a tight beat. This would not be possible if it wasn't for you. Your belief, your commitment, your care, your love made this possible. I'm here because of you. And last, to my ancestors, especially my mom, the late Virginia La Cuesta Rania Magwal, my grandparents, and new ancestors, Dr. Gwen Augustine Nodora, Grandma Crisanta Magwal, Uncle Jomer Dagdagan, Apo Ang Ciling Daus, Ma Ading Cheryl Magwal, and my former student Solomon Anselmo. It has been months of grieving, but I find strength in your legacy, and I know in your hearts you would tell me not to quit, to take care of myself, and always do my best. Dear Daly City, you are beautiful in weeks of fog and beautiful in days of sun, but I'll stick with you no matter what the weather forecasts. Through all the ups, downs, and all arounds, I'll be there at your worst, and I'll be there at your best. Thank you, Daly City. Sincerely, your new mayor, Dr. Rodrick Ronyan Das Magwal. I think I jumped the gun a little. I got excited and I did my piece, but I just want to say thank you to everybody. But before we proceed, I know that I skipped an agenda item to provide comments for the outgoing mayor. And I know I already put out my comments, Mayor, and if anybody would like to provide their comments, I see some raised hands. We'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Ray Buenaventura.
Thank you, Mayor Rodrick Das Magwal. Congratulations again. I think you're going to do a terrific job, and we're looking forward to your leadership for the coming year. So I would like to also congratulate former Mayor Justlyn Manalo for doing what I think was a remarkable job this past year. I don't think I have seen such a challenging year. We've all had challenging years, but this past year was probably the most challenging that I have ever witnessed and been a part of on the council. And there were lots of challenges, but Mayor Manalo, you not only met the challenges, but you clearly exceeded everything that came your way. What I also admired about your leadership is that you were among the most proactive mayors that have served Daly City. You had an agenda, clearly, and you were aggressive in putting forth items that you strongly believed in and were not hesitant to advocate for because of your belief system, because of your heart, your integrity, and your commitment to serving the community. So I want to thank you for your leadership, very strong leadership, and the vision that you had for our city, which was brought about in your tenure as mayor this year. You've left the city in a much better place than you found it. You've set an example of how mayors should be. You were always working. You were always in the office, and you didn't let COVID stop you. You took a lot of risks with your health. You sacrificed a lot with respect to spending time with your family, and that all of that didn't go unnoticed. I had tried to tell you to stop, but you just wouldn't because you were that dedicated of a public servant, and you knew that you only had a certain amount of time to execute on your vision and your goals because you were always thinking. You were always trying to come up with ideas and projects and things that could make Daly City better. You were meant for that job, and you did it well. It was a challenging year, like I said, but we look to you for your leadership, which you strongly handle with grace, with fearlessness, and with excellence. So I can't say enough about what you have gone through and what you have done as mayor of Daly City this past year. I want to thank you for your dedication and the sacrifice and the strength that you gave us to lead our city forward. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for a job well done.
Thank you for those really kind words, Councilmember Buenaventura. I am grateful for your support, your mentorship, and really, really humbled by those words. Thank you.
Next on the talk, we have Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. Former Mayor Justlyn Manalo. I want to first start off by letting everyone know, and if they don't already know, that you have family, you have work, you have your duties and passion for the City of Daly City. And on top of all that, that comes with those passions is the attendance of many committees and community events. Folks need to know that by serving as mayor or council member, we do so much during our evening hours and during the day when we get all these calls. You have handled that tremendously. 2021 was a year of hope and despair. And you took all of those items and you met them head-on. There were social issues, economic issues, food insecurity, and of course, the pandemic, which the pandemic itself carried other issues such resource, getting the shots in arms, locations. What I enjoyed during your leadership is you pushed the envelope. And although we agreed to disagree, at least you heard those comments. And perhaps maybe at times says, well, maybe that could be right. You've listened to council throughout the council meetings, and it's a very tough job to try to satisfy everyone. That leads to failure. And you did not do that, but you listened to everyone, and I commend you for that. Thank you for what you've done this past year in 2021. It is evident based upon your report that you gave earlier as the accomplishments that we have made throughout this year, all under your leadership. You are to be commended, and I wish you further success in the future. And thank you for being part of Daly City and for everything that you have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester, for those kind words as well. I really appreciate it. I'm deeply humbled by what everyone is saying. I can't also do the work alone, and so I'm very grateful for each and every one of you this past year. Thank you very much.
Are there any more comments? Okay, seeing none, I would like to call for nominations for the Office of Vice Mayor, and I would like to nominate Councilmember Ray Buenaventura.
Second.
Okay. Are there any more other nominations for the Office of Vice Mayor?
I don't have any nomination, but I would like to make a comment prior to the vote when it's applicable.
You could go ahead and do that right now, Councilmember Sylvester.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to first start off by saying tomorrow is promised to no one. Since the pandemic and just prior to the pandemic, what has rose to the forefront are the issues of social justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion. What we seem to have here is a term that we've used before, which is called implicit bias. Implicit bias refers to the attitudes or stereotypes that affect our understanding, actions, and decisions in an unconscious manner. Former Mayor Justlyn Manalo wanted to ensure that we understand this to include diversity, inclusion, to which all of us council members and staff had to attend and at least take the course. Believe me, it was an eye awakening experience for me. I myself, and back in 2016, was graciously appointed as mayor in 2016. And then again in 2020. I want to stress that Daly City has no protocol on the rotation of mayors. Not that someone who is vice mayor is going to ascend to mayor the final, the following year. We never know. Things can happen one way or another, but generally, the vice mayor has always ascended to mayor. Mayor, you yourself were elected to this council in 2018, and we've watched you grow. And by you observing other council members and their actions, you deserve by council, as we voted this evening, to represent us this year as mayor. I just wanted to say that if we talk the walk, we should walk the talk in regards to diversity and inclusion and say at least have given an opportunity to Councilmember Di Giovanni to take the role as vice mayor. I could be at fault here because I did not make the nomination, but I just wanted to put those thoughts out there, council. And instead of implicit bias, I think we've promoted ourselves by this very nomination to vice mayor is now explicit bias. So I just wanted to put that out there to council, and I appreciate the time to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. If there was no nomination, I'll go ahead and call to close the nominations and call for roll call vote for Vice Mayor, Councilmember Ray Buenaventura.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
With good conscience due to prior actions, I have to vote no, and he has already served in that capacity.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, I'll abstain from the vote.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye. Congratulations, Vice Mayor Ray Buenaventura.
Thank you, Mayor.
So I would, this concludes our reorganization, and I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. If I had a gavel, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.